Good afternoon. We call this regular board meeting for Wednesday, September 14th, 2022, to order at 3:30 PM. We have executive session on top of the agenda today, and since the State Board of Education is still using our boardroom upstairs this afternoon, we are starting our meeting at the garden level conference room. After executive session, we will reconvene in the boardroom at around 5:30 PM. We also have Ms. Melissa Olson sitting in for Ms. Dalgo, who's attending a training session on board docs. So thanks for helping out, Ms. Olson. With that, roll call, please, Melissa.
Dr. Bankus?
Dr. Bankus is on her way. She just texted me. She should be joining us.
Director Daniels?
President.
Vice President Jorgensen?
Here.
Director Reverend Aloma?
Here.
President Dr. Malpakum?
Here.
Treasurer Nelson?
Here.
And Director Ott?
Here.
Thank you, Melissa. I've got like too many titles now. All the titles are there.
We forgot Grand Poobah.
Please join me in a moment of silence as we reflect on several of the local and world events that have impacted us lately, including the 9/11 anniversary that we marked earlier this week. Thank you. Treasurer Nelson, can you please make the motion to adopt the agenda?
I move that the Board of Education adopt the agenda as amended by removing items F1 contract awards and F2 budget transfers, as there are no contract awards or budget transfers.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please, Melissa.
Director Daniels? Hi. Vice President Jorgensen?
Hi.
Director Reverend Aloma?
Aye.
President Malpakum?
Aye.
Treasurer Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
Aye. I savit. The motion has been adopted and the agenda has been adopted. We do have executive session scheduled for about two hours today. Director Daniels, can you please make the motion to get into the executive session?
I move that the Board of Education convene into executive session to discuss legal advice per CRS 24-6-4024B, Particular Matters, Charter Schools, Schools of Innovation, Organizational Review, Appeal of Internal Complaints, and Pending Litigation.
Second. Moved and seconded. Roll call, please, Melissa.
Director Daniels? Aye. Vice President Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Aloma?
Aye.
President Malpakum?
Aye.
Treasurer Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
I savit. We will enter into executive session now, and reconvene for our regularly scheduled board meeting at approximately 5:30 PM in our normal meeting room in the boardroom upstairs. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Who did not see the start of the meeting, the agenda was amended by removing items F1 contract awards and F2 budget transfers, as there are no contract awards or budget transfers. Now, we've had an exciting day in District 11 with the State Board holding their meeting up here in the boardroom, and they plan on continuing tomorrow. It's good to host them and get to see some of the things they are working on at the state level. And if this is an opportunity for our community to participate and watch too, you don't have to drive up to Denver. All you have to do is to come here tomorrow, look at their agenda to see what is going on. Moving on to the Pledge of Allegiance, may I please have Emma and Aubrey from Queen Palmer, they will be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance today.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Respect, responsibility, and safety equals excellence.
That's, that's the Queen Palmer. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Emma and Aubrey. That was awesome. Well, the next is the school spotlight Superintendent Gall, but I have to stop the meeting at 6 o'clock to hear public comments regarding turnaround schools. But you can start the topic of conversation, introduce Ms. Principal Butcher.
So I have, I have three minutes before we have to stop.
We have to stop for a-
At exactly 6 o'clock.
At 6 o'clock.
So, Principal Butcher, I'm going to talk about you and your school for three minutes, so your time to come up will be after public comment. And so I'll just also double down on Dr. Malpakum's comments of what an honor it was to have the State Board of Education for Colorado in the very space that we sit today, and I had the good fortune of being able to give them both the past, present, and future of District 11. And the heart of the theme of the past was to focus on Queen Palmer's vision for the first school that Dr. Malpakum speaks about so eloquently, on driving excellence into Colorado Springs education. And it is not by coincidence, I think it might be by divine intervention, that I was able to then highlight the strong work that's happening at today's version of Queen Palmer, which is Queen Palmer Elementary School. And so the ability to be able to speak to the State Board of Education about excellence founded in 1872 and then realized again now in 2022 to position the district not of just of where it was, but where it's headed, and rooted so strongly in the six pillars that I'm sure Principal Butcher will speak to you all about today, but really embodying this idea that every student is known, and I know that that happens within Queen Palmer through many systems and structures, but first and foremost in the heart that she and her team bring to her school every day. The numbers are up. You give me a challenge of a number, and it's up. So what's happening at Queen Palmer is the future and the vision for where we're headed as District 11. And I think I have 15 more seconds to say, I love your little add-on to the Pledge of Allegiance, and I hope that we're ready for public comment. Back to you, Dr. Malpakum.
Yeah, and thank you, Ms. Butcher. You were here earlier this morning presenting to the State Board, and now you are having a longer day. You are staying over to talk to this school board, to appreciate you bringing your staff over and your kids over too. With that, Melissa, do we have any public comments for the Priority Improvement and Turnaround Schools public hearing?
We do not.
Okay. Back to you, Superintendent Gall. We don't have any public comments.
Principal Butcher? For you, the floor is yours. Our school spotlight of the week, Queen Palmer Elementary.
Good morning. Actually, it's like, "Good morning," didn't you? So you guys know my name is Christina Butcher and the school at Queen Palmer Elementary School. We are a Title I school. We do ebb and flow between 88% to 93% of our students that are free on reduced lunch. And as I spoke with the State Board of Education this morning, there are six opportunity gaps that we focus on at Queen Palmer to ensure that our kids are meeting exceeding grade level expectations. And the first one is embedded in PLCs. So our staff thrives on our embedded PLCs where we rotate between ELA and math every day, I mean, every week. We identify the high leverage standards, and from there, they use it to create common interim assessments, exit tickets, quizzes, mid-end and module assessments. We know that's the quantitative piece. You can throw 80%, 20% of students meeting it, but the meat of our embedded PLCs is the qualitative part of where you're analyzing the student work, you're identifying the trends, and when you're looking at that, you're identifying misconceptions, right? So when you identify those misconceptions, you're really focusing on what instructional strategies you're going to use, how are you going to adjust your tier-one instruction, and how are you going to adjust your small group instruction in real time before the following week? And so by doing it weekly versus bi-weekly in real time embedded through the day, you can go immediately back into your classroom and apply that new learning immediately in real time. Our second way that we're closing that opportunity gap is the power of our bi-weekly data meetings. So our bi-weekly data meetings consists of analyzing our students' Acadian's data. They're grouped by A, B, C, and D, and so we have five incredible interventionists. And the way we do that is, we have students that are already meets above grade level expectations. So we have one interventionist that focuses on those enrichment kids to extend for them, and then the other four will focus on the strategic kids and those that are at risk. And so we make sure that that's a valuable untouched time, so that they are very intentionally meeting with them, so they're getting double, triple dipped, both in ELA and in math. The third way that we're closing in our opportunity gap is the power of student empowerment, and that's student goal setting. Dr. Gladich, Dr. Thurman prior at the end of the year kind of transitioned in and did an informal walkthrough, along with Reverend Aloma as well, and simply asked the students, where are your goals are, how did you get there, and what's your EOI goals? And so I have to speak to one of my friends, my Panda friends, who very eloquently said, you know, "My goal was 76 words a minute. My goal here in the next four weeks is, you know, 100 words." And he simply asked what the action steps were, and one of them was using Renaturi Life, right? It focuses on fluency, comprehension, and vocabulary. And so he was able to identify those steps and able to achieve that by the end of his EOI. So I encourage you to come into our building, ask those kids where they are, where they're going to go, because if they understand the why, it's not just we need to learn to read with fluency and expression, it's how do you engage into the real world of reading, like stuff that's happening today, but also how do you immerse yourself into a level of texts that are Harry Potter or Dogman, those types of books as well? So we're trying to get them into the informational text as well as the fantasy text as well, and building that balance of both. So the power of goal setting for students is huge, because if they know the why, they're motivated to achieve it. Our next way that we're closing the opportunity gap is really around the power of being a strong instructional leader. And I talked about with the State Board of Education, because if I was to coach Mrs. Nelson right now, and you're a Year One teacher, and I said, "I need you to go ahead and model what metacognition looks like in the gradual release of an IDV do you do, and you don't know what that looks and sounds like, but I'm coaching you to do it. My job as instructional leader is to go in a team, but I'm going to go and model and show you what that looks and sounds like." And the power of building the culture within my amazing QP Dream Team is that they know I walk alongside them, I'm in it with them together, I'm in the trenches doing the work, I'm there for each and every one of them, and I think for any instructional leader out there, it's important, the power of coaching, that you're just moving around the words, but you're going in the trenches and showing them as well. If that's not a strength of an instructional leader, this amazing instructional leadership team learned from each other. So this year, we've developed learning walks. They're nonevalutive. It was developed by them, and they are going to be learning and coaching each other along the way, so that they can learn and grow from each other, because they're so amazing, they don't have opportunities to learn from each other. So that is our part of our one plan this year, is that they are going to learn and grow from each other as well. One of my last ways that I think closing the opportunity gap is hiring high-quality teachers. And the power of high-quality teachers is not just, you know, Year One can be a high-quality teacher, a veteran teacher can be a high-quality teacher, but it's the mindset and the mantra. And they will tell you that all means all, no excuses, high expectations, we're all in it together. And it's true that we truly are all in it together. And so by having that culture and that mindset of believing that every kid can learn, and we're going to grow them from where they are and where they need to be, they've created this synergy this year, because I think last year in the pandemic, I'm telling you, they're just amazing through this whole time in their level of resilience, that they never gave up. There was never a complaint. They were always willing to do the work, and it made my three years during that time a lot easier, because they value and love these kids, and they believe that all kids can learn. And so those are the three ways that we are closing the opportunity gap, and I want to close to you that although that we are growing our kids, this incredible Dream Team here will tell you that we're not only going to close the growth gap, but we are going to close the achievement gap as well. Just give us a few years to get there as we tighten up our systems, and we are going to get there as a Queen Palmer Dream Team. Thank you.
Ms. Butcher, I'm just going to turn, look at my board and see if they had any follow-up thoughts or questions for you. I assume the first two rows are all Queen Palmer teachers?
I want you to read for us.
Oh, wow. Okay. Yeah? Well, thank you. Thank you all. All of you are doing such an amazing job, and I listened to what you had to say to the State Board this morning, and they were impressed with what you said. And it's the same thing. Over and over again, for the past year, we've looked at your data and how you have, and what you shared with the school board, that you are a high FRL school with somewhere from 86% to 93% you said, something like that, are high FRL numbers. And you can use that as an excuse, like what the State Board, but no, that's not what you're, you find a way. So when you can do it in that kind of challenging environment, then every other school can do it too. So when you're talking about modeling walks, maybe you need to model the walk for other principals to our school district. So I will turn it over. Director Daniels?
Thank you. Hi. Sure. I appreciate your presentation, and I was excited to hear more from you, because of course, it's, it's always wonderful to see, hear from someone that is truly not just talking the talk, but walking the walk. And you mentioned, it's not just what we're saying, but it is the mindset. I just wanted you to share a little bit more about that.
About the?
The mindset that you spoke of, like, we're going to come in and we're going to move this according to what we-
Yes, and I wish I-
I think to add on to what you were talking about, hiring high-quality teachers, and you said like it doesn't need to be a first-
Without calling out some of my, my Dream Team here, because, you know, they would tell you this as well, but, you know, affirmations are not my love language. I don't need it. I do it because of my drive. But when I have some of my instructional leadership team that meet with me and say that I model the I expectations, I'm very consistent in leading by example. So you will see me, like, for the last three weeks, you know, I'm modeling in morning meeting, I'm modeling in the hallway, I'm modeling in the lunchroom, I'm modeling at recess, I'm modeling in the classroom. And so by doing that, you'll see like my ESP will start to emulate, you know, the structures of what we do, whether it's CKH, whether it's Kagan Strategies, we do that naturally, wouldn't you agree? I mean, we embed it not just like in the classroom, we are embedding it everywhere within the building. And so when you see an instructional leader do that, and you see that your staff as instructional leadership team collaboratively agree that this is what's best practice for our students, and they see that it works, the culture naturally just comes together. So I always meet with the team first. I never make decisions without meeting with my instructional leadership team, because it's important for me to have that buy-in and get more than one brain telling me like the direction of where we go. And I think about 99% of the time, you know, they all have very good questions that help us drive the rest of our school into that vision and mission of, we are critical thinkers, we have high expectations, we're a learning community, and we dare to empower the whole student to profoundly impact our world. And so that's how we build our culture, is just that I always bring forth to the team, and we talk through it together collaboratively. A lot of times, I'll have a plan in place, and then we'll tweak some things, but they come up with some really creative ideas. So like our learning walks this week, we've created schedules where they're all going to be looking at each other in ELA and math, because you know, when we talk about best first instruction, it has not changed. Tier-one instruction has been around forever, we're just calling it BFI. So the thing is that if you have strong tier-one instruction and you can scaffold and differentiate within tier-one, you will have less kids in tier-two and tier-three. And so the goal is that I don't have reading interventionists anymore, because my kids are getting it, and we've talked about that at our staff meeting today, the power of being able to do that within tier-one. So BFI is no different. There are phases to it, and I can spit it to you real quickly, but I'm not going to do that, because it hasn't changed. And I think the staff here understands the power of that. We've been doing it for the last three, four years, so it's not new. We're just calling it something different. And so by creating that culture, and the trust, and the rapport, and knowing that I'm there for them, and knowing that they're there for me, has been able to move into a direction over the last several years, into a place where we are five out of five on our five Es. Like I said, it didn't happen overnight. It was a progression over time, and that's just listening to them, coming together, and being able to find solutions. And I think, I'm a high structure person, they know that, and I think they thrive on that. We're very systematic in our instructional strategies, K5. We just do our strategies developmentally appropriate in K1, 2 versus 3, 4, 5. But if you walk into my building, you will see that those strategies are aligned, K5, so that every year that they move up, they're just building on each other at a higher level of rigor.
Thank you. Because for me-
Your mic.
Yeah.
There we go. Mic's nice.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the mic, and thank you for that, because for me, it does start with, with you, like, within you, and it's not necessarily someone trying to pull something out of you. It's exuding without even asking. And that is so powerful. And the children know, because they are censors, right? They can know BS immediately. And when they see it, they, they repel. They don't want anything to do with it. So I am grateful that you're bringing them in, because you're authentic.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yep. Director Nelson?
You mentioned that this didn't happen overnight. I was curious, how long have you been the principal at Queen Palmer?
I transitioned in under Dr. Thomas December of 2018.
Okay.
I was in AP six, seven years prior to that.
So about four years now.
Yes.
I was curious, the five interventionists you mentioned, is that the FTE from your normal allotted student?
So one is the ESTER, the ESTER, and then the others are paid through my title budget. So two are paid through title, and if you try to get the biggest bang for the buck, if you can hire two ESP parents, SIPs is a very scripted program, so we try to train them, so I can get more coming in to support. So we have three certified teachers and two ESP interventionists. So one's ESTER, two are paid through title, and the other two are ESP interventionists are paid through title.
Okay. Thank you.
So she's now sharing her trade secrets now.
Well, we want that. We want other schools to know.
And we're differentiating, so like, one is very strong with gifted and enrichment. So if my child's reading 100, you know, reading 130 words a minute at a first-grade level, we need to extend for them. So her, she's targeting those kids. And then we have the strategic, and the others focus on the at-risk. And so we differentiate that. We, like I said, we have, I'll speak loud and proud, so what I'm seeing is that we're also doing instruction, differentiation instruction, interventions for math and ELA as well. So-
That's great.
Yeah.
The learning walks, I assume that's taking place throughout the day. So is that over the planning time of some of the staff?
So at our last instructional leadership team, because we just started, we developed, we're developing the schedule, identifying who's, which mentor is going to be a mentee based on the grade level, because you don't want a kindergartner with a fifth-grade teacher, right? You want them close together, so that they can come in and provide nonevalutive feedback based on those learning walks. So we developed one, because we don't currently have one like as a district, and so we took one, developed it together, and so we are going to chunk out primary in the first quarter, K1, 2 for ELA, second quarter, 3, 4, 5 ELA, K1, 2 math, 3, 4, 5 math this year, because of time and subs.
Yeah. I'm interested here more, so I'll circle back with you at a later date.
Okay.
And I just also want to say thank you for the award that you gave the Board of being a part of the Panda Friends and the success at Queen Palmer.
Yes.
And we have little chocolate bars, and-
Yes, you're welcome.
It's just a nice touch. Thank you for that gift.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Director Jorgensen?
Yep. Just brief comments. I was here this morning when you shared with the State Board, just your shorter review cycles, I don't need you to get into it today, but what I heard her say was, very short review cycles with data, you know, these weekly meetings, as you mentioned, with math and, and language arts, you know, not wasting time in old data that even is just two weeks old, especially if you're covering three or four lessons in a subject matter within a week. And so having those weekly touchpoints on, all right, where are we at, even if it's just a three-question, you know, common formative assessment that you're working with-
That's all you need.
Right. That's all you need to pull those kids, talk about what they need for that next couple of days, and that's something that you're doing. You know, in education, everything has been around, it just gets renamed, like you mentioned. Kagan Strategies have been around for two decades, and, you know, they're in D11 this year, and they're part of our BFI that's wonderful. They're nothing new. There's nothing new in education under the sun. It's just relabeling and figuring out how to make money off of it, is what people do. And so having an instructional leader that models it, that knows best practices, that gives them the instructional tools they need at a building to succeed, and then models it, is why your team works so hard for you and why our kids are succeeding with you. So I just wanted to say, I appreciate that.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Jason. Any other questions?
Director Aloma?
Well, the data that we have on you speaks for itself, and to you guys, oh, ladies, sorry, it just, you know, it's good to see. But I don't, I think I would be remiss not to mention the, the janitors and your food service people, because when I walked in, and I told you this, being an old military guy, when I walked in, the first thing I noticed was the glare off the floor. And I, and I go, and that set the tone. So I expected, my, right as soon as I walked in, my expectations were up here, and the teachers and what you're doing exceeded my expectations. But not only that, your lunchroom, everything, everything was all where it should be, despite you have an old decrepit building, correct?
74 years old.
You have, your, your outside is not the most beautiful in the city, and then you don't drive by the nicest houses, you know, God bless everyone there, and, but they have the, all those old houses have a quality of school that they can attend. And, and, and so my hats are, are off to all the teachers, the support staff, from the janitor. I know the janitor well, the, the building manager, and, and so give him a raise, and I'm just kidding. But he'll say that, "How come you didn't tell him to give him a raise?" Anyway, but I just want to mention that on top of what everybody else mentioned, because I always, when I visit a building, of course, I talk to the principal, but I always want to talk to the building manager, because they have a hard task in, in the schools. So I give them my regards, hopefully I'll see them again this year.
Yep. I'll let Brian know. And we don't have ACH, so you know.
It's all right.
Especially last week. But thank you, Reverend Aloma. I appreciate that.
Yes.
So thank you. Yeah, we got to cherish those moments coming from Director Aloma, because usually he's not, he's not waxing poetic praises at some of our schools, but if he's praising you, you weren't, all that is coming from him.
Yes, we, we had very candid conversations around academics and getting kids reading by third grade. And we, like I said, those weekly embedded PLCs and those PDSA's, we are tracking that data every week.
So a couple of thoughts from me, and maybe one question. One, when I looked at your numbers, it looks like you have 30 more students in your school this year as opposed to last year. So congratulations on that.
Thank you.
Going from 170 to 200, 200-plus now. So that's awesome. That's what we want to see in our schools. And that speaks volumes, because you are reaching out to the demographic out there and saying that the promise that you made to the students that come there, you are providing a high-quality education, and word spreads around in the community, and then parents come calling on you. So thank you. The other thing that I noticed was, some of our schools, when we are looking, and we are going to be looking at the use of data for some of our priority improvement and turnaround school, attendance is always a challenge. But when I look at your school, you got like 93, 94, 95% consistent attendance over the thing. What are some of the best practices that gets you there?
Boots on the ground.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm going to houses. You know what I mean? I drive there, I'm boots on the ground.
You go there personally?
I do.
Okay.
So, you know, I'll follow D11 protocol, and I'll bring them in, and we follow that. But the power of building relationships, like a lot of my families need strategies. They, one could be, you know, the students run the roost, and so it's like, it could be a second grader to a fifth grader, but as soon as they see me at that door, it's like, get your backpack, get your clothes on, brush your teeth, and let's go. And then I'm having conversation with parents, and it's like, you know, I can't get them up. I can't get them up. And so we have conversations around incentives of, incentives of some of those kids. But I will tell you a strategy we use under my previous social worker, Rick Garcia, that retired. So we have a few, we have several kids that live less than a mile. You know, they have to walk. So thank you, Kevin McCafferty in transportation. So because they're like that point nine, he was able, and we found like just across street of kids that were already getting picked up by allowing these four students, and they love riding the bus, to just go one block over or street over and get on that bus is now how they're able to get to school every day. And they love getting to get on that bus because they've never been on a bus before. So even though they're, you know, under that one mile, sometimes if you just talk with transportation, they'll, they'll work with you in finding that nearest bus stop. And those kids now are getting on that bus to and from school. But under myself, our current social worker, our counselor, we are in the trenches and we will go to homes and we will talk to them and we will have conversations. And I don't know if I'm allowed to say this, but I will bring them to school.
Which is great. The first words that came out of your mouth was boots on the ground. That's not typically what we hear from a building leader, that you are invested that much in the success of your kids. So thank you for what you're doing. I'm sure the board appreciates all that you are doing out there. Continue your work. We look forward to visiting your school. And thank you for all the staff being here and for Emma and Aubrey in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes, I just want to close. I really just want to give three hearts to that team. They, they're the ones that are in the trenches doing the work every day. You know, my job is to support them in any way that I can. And so I can't do it by myself, right? It's collaborative effort. And so you can see today that they're super proud and they're very intrinsically driven to like beat where we are before. We're just really competitive like that. And so, and like I said, we just believe all kids can learn. I don't give, you know, I don't care about, that's why it's no excuses. We don't care about the home life. They're with us for those seven point five hours a day and while they're with us, we're going to do the best we can to get them where they need to be.
Can we, can we bring your group up for a picture real quick?
Absolutely.
Bring the two students from the Pledge of Allegiance too.
And love your shirts too. Did the whole school come here? It just seems like you...
One, two. QP.
So thank you. Yeah, thank you. Truly appreciate it. I mean, you are named after the founder of School District Eleven, so you have the namesake to live up to. So thank you for what you guys are doing. Moving on, public comments. Quickly going over the protocol. As I see some new faces in the boardroom this evening, the board will hear comments for a total of sixty minutes. We hear action, non-action items, comments first, and then the remainder of the minutes is set aside for general comments. If students signed up for public comments, we prioritize student comments first. Each of you have three minutes for your comment. A clock will be displayed on the screen to help you through that. Please monitor the clock so you get through your comment in three minutes. The board is interested in listening to all comments without any disruption, so please be respectful of our speakers and maintain the expected decorum in the boardroom. Treat every speaker with kindness, dignity and respect. If you want to show support or solidarity to a speaker, please stand up as the speaker is talking or use silent applause. Lastly, the statements made by the public do not reflect the views of the board or the district. With that, Ms. Olson. And they are arranged in the order?
They are.
Okay, thank you.
Action on top.
Okay. Naomi Lopez, Ms. Lopez.
She's unable to be here.
Councilman Dave Donaldson.
Thank you Superintendent Gall, President Mel Pakem, Vice President Jorgensen and rest of the board for allowing me to speak this evening. I want to tell you about something I'm going to do and then I have a request to ask of the board. So as you said, I'm on city council and at our next session, which will be thirteen days from today, I'm going to introduce a resolution which will state our opposition to the legalization of recreational marijuana here in Colorado Springs. Why am I going to do that? I'm concerned about the effects on our city's economy and also the health of our young people, our students and other young adults in the city. Our economy is tied to the defense industry. That's an important part of it. When the military and when contractors make decisions on where to post, where to increase the size of military facilities or for contractors to hire, one of the things they looked at is the environment that workers will be in. And so if we legalize recreational marijuana, that's going to harm us as we compete against places like Huntsville. So that's important for students to graduate or there are going to be jobs out there for them to fill. And it's not just those defense industry jobs. Those, those defense people spend money in restaurants, they buy cars, they buy furniture, they do other things, they employ people. So that's one. Secondly, as some of you know, I served as a PA. I worked as a physician assistant for more than twenty years, took care of a lot of patients. So the medical side of recreational marijuana is important to me, especially in youth. There's a book I read a couple of years ago, and this is it, it's called Tell Your Children The Truth About Mental, The Truth About Marijuana, Mental Illness and Violence. And some of the examples, some of the information in this book is taken directly from Colorado because we were one of the first to have medical marijuana. And there's some frightening stories in here. But it's, it's good information. I would recommend all of you read it before you make a decision on whether or not to ever support recreational marijuana. I want to read you this one piece and then I'm going to have my ask. So the association between cannabis use and development of a psychotic disorder is supported by data synthesized in several good quality systemic reviews, the National Academy of Medicine wrote. The magnitude of this association is moderate to large and appears to be dose dependent. The primary literature reviewed by the committee confirms the conclusions of the systematic reviews. And we've seen recently more and more studies here in Colorado and other places from ERs that suggest that actually really prove that the more exposure to cannabis, the more likely kids are going to have psychiatric problems. So I ask you to follow and do what we're going to do on city council, introduce and pass a resolution against recreational marijuana in Colorado Springs. I ask you to do this because elected officials and organizations need to do this now. Don't wait until it passes. If it passes, you may look back and wish you had done something and not have a chance. Thank you.
Thank you. That was on time. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Rhonda Heschel. I'm a Coronado PTA parent and I'm also a pediatric nurse practitioner. I just want to say I agree one hundred percent with Doc, or with Councilman Donaldson. As a healthcare provider, recreational marijuana is a big disaster. We cannot, we have to do everything possible that that does not pass. But that's not why I'm here. Last week, I was able to attend an open house at King Elementary. It was a wonderful event that included a PTA sponsored barbecue before the open house. I met many of the amazing teachers and terrific families. The principal, Ms. Treg Joslin, had the students do a scavenger hunt so their parents could learn their way around the school and so that they could all meet her as well because she was on the scavenger hunt list. So you had to find Principal Joslin. It was a great experience in a terrific elementary school. And I just loved hearing from Principal Butcher. She's amazing. Of all the school spotlights that we hear, they're all fantastic. So there's so much positive in D eleven and I just want everyone to remember that because we're all looking for ways to improve, but there are so many things that are going well. Yesterday, I also went to a meeting sponsored by Great Education Colorado, a nonprofit dedicated to driving academic excellence for all Colorado students. The first speaker was the founder of Career Wise. His name is Noel Ginsberg. Career Wise is a nonprofit that places high school students in paid internships with businesses two days a week so that they can obtain real life job skills. And the businesses gain a pipeline of diverse and talented employees. Developing business partnerships with, for example, the defense industries that we have in town would be one way for D eleven to increase investment in our schools from businesses and by, and build a reputation as the best place for job oriented students to attend school in Colorado Springs. Finally, the last part of the event was a panel of young people who went through the Career Wise program to hear their experiences. One of the questions was, what was the most important thing you gained from your experience in Career Wise? And one young woman answered, definitely the soft skills I gained. I was really impressed because when I was her age, I had no idea what soft skills were and I didn't have any of them. So scops, what are soft skills? In case you don't know, they're things like time management, communication, adaptability, problem solving, teamwork, creativity, leadership and interpersonal skills. According to a recent article in Forbes magazine, these are the skills that employers are looking for and the most competitive candidates will be the ones that have them. We can teach these skills to students in D eleven, giving them the edge they need as they venture out into the world after high school. And Coronado numbers, enrollment numbers are up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Stacy Adair. I'm an elementary school teacher. I'd like to also talk about the upcoming ballot initiative for Colorado Springs. If passed, this ballot initiative will make recreational marijuana legal. I remember back to the medical marijuana initiative when they said that they in no way wanted recreational marijuana. But we needed to allow people to use it for health issues. Okay, that made some sense. Fast forward, now that we have the legal growers for medical marijuana, guess who donated the one million dollars to get recreational marijuana on the ballot? That's right, one million dollars just to get it on the ballot. Where does this money come from? It was the growers. They donated all the money needed to get the signatures to get this on the ballot in Colorado Springs. Back then, they also said that the taxes on that money would go to education. For a couple of years, the teachers that I work with kept asking, where's all that marijuana money? Where'd it go? Well, we don't know. We never saw it. We can only guess that someone may be taking some fancy vacations, but I can guarantee that it's not the teachers. Don't fall for that line, ever. It doesn't end up in education. But how does this affect students? That's the important issue. In schools, we have had kids bring their parents medical, medical marijuana to school. If recreational marijuana is legalized, how many more kids will be exposed to this high potency marijuana? How many more families will move here for recreational marijuana? How many more high schoolers will get addicted to the now highly potent and highly addictive strains of marijuana? How many more D eleven families will be impacted? I once tutored a first grader who had been expelled. He had moved to Colorado to follow legal marijuana. Well, he'd been brought to Colorado with, to follow legal marijuana. But when I tried to tutor him, he mostly crawled around on the floor of the library study room. He did not understand structure or sitting down or working on schoolwork. He was a brilliant kid. It was such a sad story. I am speaking today to spread awareness that legalized recreational marijuana is not good for kids. It's absolutely not good for our students. No person who cares about kids would want Colorado Springs to have legal recreational marijuana. Please help spread the word so people will return their ballot next month and vote against this. Ballots arrive the middle of October. Please tell all your friends and neighbors. Legalized marijuana is not good for our city. We've heard the phrase, please don't California our Colorado. I'd like to say today, please don't Denver our Colorado Springs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Buenos dias. I don't know if we need the mic here, but I'm Amy O'Connor and I teach Spanish at, at Palmer. And, well, that's okay. That's beside the point. I feel really weird giving half the people the back, my back in this room. So maybe if we could consider like somebody speaks on the side. I don't need much as a teacher. Whiteboard markers, engaging reading material and maybe a good prop box because I do TPR, Total Physical Response, stories most days. I don't even need a projector most days that works. But one essential element that I have to say that we at Palmer and many other D eleven schools also have been doing without is a comfortable environment. So it seems to have been considered a luxury in this, this is my fourteenth year at Palmer, right? It seems to have been considered a luxury and not a right. I'm speaking for numerous colleagues. I sent out an email, a little late, but yesterday, and got over twenty responses. And we're talking, we teachers, you know, we're busy. We do not write paragraphs about things unless it is really important to us. And so people were, wrote paragraphs about the fact that my temperature is in my room, seventy-nine degrees to eighty-six degrees in the last two weeks, right? So we're not even talking over the last month. So I'm summarizing for all these people, I don't know if, I know there's a time limit, but. In other areas, social studies on the first floor, high eighties to nineties. In the tech building, which has air but it's broken, seventy-five to eighties, right? And it goes on and on. The basement, which you would think would be cooler, is over eighty-three degrees and almost with no airflow. So, you know, my challenge would be for you to put yourselves into that situation, right? Spend, turn your heater up to eighty-one this week and do a little light exercise because we like to ask our students to be active and to move around. And then try to read something difficult or get on Duolingo and teach yourself another language. Or look up slope intercept, which is what I did a couple nights ago for my junior who's at Manitou. You know, do something that's a little bit difficult for your brain. It's really hard. And so it's especially hard at this time of the year because we know how the beginning of the year is so important, right? And we're trying to connect with students and we're trying to set the tone. And we can't do that when we're in an environment that is, is unacceptable. It's just, it's not conducive to learning. It's exhausting. We have things like headaches, listlessness, irritability, grumpy, sleepy. These are all coming from, these were from other teachers and just, you know, students. They don't feel respected. They don't feel honored. Even the honor students, right? Don't, they, they say they can't take the heat. They're dropping classes in the afternoon because some rooms are hotter than others.
Thank you, Ms. Connor.
So, yeah.
Thank you. Appreciate what you said.
Yeah. I would, I would beg just even a couple more minutes to talk.
Well, you can, you can contact the superintendent or you can even send an email to the board.
Can I just say it was really nice to see him up on the third floor today, actually?
Yep.
Because that gave us some hope that perhaps we, this isn't a new issue, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Appreciate it. Okay, I, I want to take this, you sent me an email too, Ms. O'Connor, so I want to take this opportunity to correct that. Earlier this morning, our window for signing up online was supposed to open at nine, nine o'clock in the morning, but we don't have our secretary to the board normal, Ms. Hidalgo here, and that got missed. So some of you tried signing up at nine o'clock and it wasn't open and I got a couple of phone calls and emails on it, so. But as soon as I got it, I did talk to the concerned personnel out here and got that fixed. And it was open by nine thirty. But that was on me, that we didn't have the structures and supports in place to have it open exactly at nine AM. And we'll make sure we'll follow up and do that going forth. The next comment, and I'm sure the superintendent will add in his superintendent's report, some comments about what Ms. O'Connor shared and his visit to Palmer. Okay.
Good evening, board. I'm talking about education because that's the focus. So one of the board's priorities is the board will refocus and improve academic outcomes for all students. for all students by empowering every student to achieve their personal best while sustaining, rigor, and demonstrating evidence-based academic growth. And I think, no matter people's groups, all parents can agree with that. And one of the ways that the Board, I think we criticize the Board a lot, so I'll give props where it's due, and one of the areas that the Board has done that is by having counselors in all the schools, right? That's something that is reinforcing social-emotional learning, which is a phenomenal thing because what that does, it's a process of developing self-awareness, self-control, and interpersonal skills that are vital for school, work, and life success. And I think if we want our students to be successful, we should put things around them to help them be successful. And there's been plenty of data, which I'm going to go through, to kind of show the impact that that is having. And we see it firsthand at successful schools, like QP just listed several things that they're doing that really are social-emotional learning as well. In classrooms with higher emotional support, children show increased social skills and decreased problematic behaviors. In classrooms with higher organization, children develop better social-emotional skills. And in classrooms with higher instructional support, promote children's social and emotional skills. It's a lot easier if a student is having issues. We have interventionists, like Queen Palmer was talking about. We have interventionists, like Ms. Martin is an interventionist at QP where her kids go to school, and she's phenomenal. And being able to address those issues with the kids is a direct correlation to their performance being enhanced. Dual-language learners and children with disabilities appear to benefit from more effective interactions across class domains. And high-quality interactions are associated with benefits over time. So, I'm encouraging the Board to continue to focus on things like that and not things that are unnecessary, like books in class that people might think are unnecessary, or books in libraries that people might think are unnecessary. That really doesn't affect kids because if a kid doesn't want a book, or if a parent doesn't want their kid to have the book, the parent has the right to make sure the kid doesn't check that book out. That shouldn't be eliminated as a result of people that don't even have kids in school politicizing books. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Shayna Dabney.
Good evening. And I do apologize, I signed up under the wrong section. I did definitely mean to make comment on the turnaround schools. So, my name is Shayana Dabney. I'm familiar with some of you. Superintendent Gall, President Milpackham, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. I would like to address Mitchell High School specifically. I am a District 11 graduate as of 2017, and I am especially proud to announce that I am a Mitchell graduate. I think, well, let me back up. I went on to college at CSU Pueblo, studied political science and history with the intention of coming back to serve my community. And I came back and did just that. I started on the School Accountability Committee at Mitchell. I am now very proud and excited to announce that I am the chair. And there's a lot of exciting things, I think, that are gearing up to happen at Mitchell. And I, one thing I would like to personally speak to is there are a lot of public conceptions about Mitchell that I think we need to not just challenge, but overtly, like, we have to call into question why we blew like film. In my personal opinion, a lot of perceptions of Mitchell have persisted because no one has been around to challenge them. And I think, so long as we allow these perceptions to maintain, they will. I got a great education at Mitchell. I think that someone needs to say Mitchell High School is a place where you can get a great education. Their staff, still, I was going to say, even since the reconstitution, I see staff in there that's dedicated to making sure that children in that building get a great education. I think as a wraparound school, we need to ensure that we are wrapping around Mitchell as well and providing the teachers and the administration the support that they need to be effective because whether or not Mitchell High School proceeds, the students that live in that area will still need to be served, and their needs still also need to be met. So, I really hope that going forward into the school year, we can set aside our differences and truly, when we're analyzing issues, we're asking the question, does this benefit the students in our district and not, does this serve my own personal interests? And that was all that I had for us today.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Robert Abita.
Good evening, D-11 School Board members. I'm here to give a little education on what happened in '47. There was a case that took prayer out, at '47, they initially tried to take prayer out of school. And then '62, they adopted it. The SCOTUS voted to take prayer out of school. '63 followed, they took the Bible out of school. And that's the cause of a lot of moral decay, violence in schools, violence in the streets, and all that. And this is what's going on in America right now, in this Colorado Springs right now. I'm just going to pull this over here so I can get on the camera. This is what I believe is happening, right here. Okay? And there's a constant attack going on against Christianity, as you see in the media and entertainment. And this country was birthed on the Bible, which is a love story from God, okay? There's an attack on Him, and they're attacking Him when they attack us. And I would like to see that stopped. There's a prayer that the kids spoke in school back, and it said, Almighty God, we acknowledge our dependence upon Thee, and we beg Thy blessings upon us, our parents, our teachers, and our country. A little simple, little innocent prayer like that was taken out. And since that time, like we were talking about pot, I call it dope. I saw the effects of that. I tried it one time, that was enough for me. Alcohol was enough, but I got born again, delivered from all that. But this constant attack from BLM, Critical Race Theory, that's an attack on our country, our founding fathers. Our founding fathers, they birthed this country through the Bible. And that's what I'd like to see, if that prayer could be reinstated. I know what the Supreme Court said, that it's illegal, I guess, but it's not. It's free speech, and everybody has their right of conscience. And there's a constant attack on moral absolutes. It started with moral relativism and values clarification, and that brought all the curses on this country. And I just pray that you guys try to get this prayer in. I don't know what's going to happen, but if we need it, we need it for this country or else it's going to go down the tubes, okay? Communism, Marxism, or socialism is the left's vision for this state and this country. So, thank you.
Thank you. That's all for public comments. That's all I have today that people signed up for. Thank you for being here this evening and sharing your thoughts and comments. The Board appreciates hearing from all of you. Your feedback helps us to better do our job. And if you checked the box that you want an administrator to contact you, somebody will follow up and contact you. So, moving on, the next item on the agenda is special reports. And first on that is Board Member Reports. Board colleagues, anyone has? And I have Director Daniels.
Yes. Thank you. I just wanted to acknowledge Doherty, and they had their band competition last Saturday. It was raining all day. Do you know they don't cancel that? Do you still have to be out there with those instruments and everything? And oh my goodness, those students did so great. And Palmer was there. Oh, yes, in the football game, they won. It was just exciting. I was just like, I just have to acknowledge Mr. Angelo Sapienza and Mr. Kalen Ward at Palmer. They were there at the clinic too, doing their, I just was so, I was just so thrilled, even though it was raining all day and it was cold, all day. These kids were there from 6:00 a.m. till like 9:00 o'clock at night. The band program, ooh, they need some help. It's a lot, you guys. I had no idea. But I just want you to know, all of the clubs, all of the areas that the auxiliary parts of us are still out there doing their thing, and they need support just as much because they're dedicating so much volunteer time, the parents out there. It just really opened my eyes to the clubs. Without the clubs, a lot of students would not have an extended part of who they are. And you're watching them build the relationships with each other, and it's just phenomenal. So, I just had to acknowledge that. And also, I just happened to get a visit into the records department, and because we're celebrating 150 years, OMG, just to see where we've come from in 150 years. Dr. X and Ms. Pam Serbin over there, amazing. Thank you for just showing me around and letting me touch some archival things of just the history of what we've done in this community. So, that's all I really had. But yeah, when you guys are out there and you're thinking, like, you know, we need to fundraise one more time, please, please know that they're doing this all based on just pure excitement of wanting to be involved. And it takes, it takes a lot to keep them going. So, FYI, and yeah, I know you're buying gift wraps and chocolate and candies and t-shirts and hats and all of that stuff, but it makes a difference for our students as well. It really, really does. So, thank you, everybody out there.
So, thank you, Director Daniels, for sharing that report, and it's good to see our students thriving. And that Saturday was cold and rainy, and they were there for 12 hours or so, competing and having a good time. So, thank you for sharing that report. Director Bankus.
I would like to, excuse me, follow up on some of the good information we've had about what's happening in our schools here in District 11. And having had the opportunity to attend the State of the City Luncheon the other day and hear our own mayor talk about how important it is for District 11 to stay vibrant, for how important it is for us to make sure that our community knows the invaluable jewel that they have in our educational system here. I also want to call out Twain Adams and Mitchell Saban. As I attended their events, it was delightful to have to park a half a mile away because of all the parents who had already parked there so I could get in and enjoy the festivities that were going on. So, thank you to all of the staff and the principal and the parents who participated. And I think it's important for us to remember there are good things that are happening here in Colorado Springs because of District 11. So, thank you.
Thank you for that report, Director Bankus. I think Director Jorgensen was there, and I was also there at the State of the City. And the thing that I remember is our mayor standing up there and saying, the State of the City is excellent, our future is bright. So, and then he mapped where the city was eight years back, 2015, and where it is now. And what he was sharing is, we've come a long way. And things that were a challenge, they've overcome that, and the state of our economy and the state of our city is excellent. And that's my fervent hope for school District 11 too, that when we step away, each one of us, we leave the school district better than we found it. Director Jorgensen.
Yeah, much to do around D-11 here. I crossed paths with Rhonda at the Coronado Open House on Tuesday night. That was good to see that. I did stop by the foreign language classrooms there as well, Ms. O'Connor. We're equally as warm as yours in Palmer, especially on the west side of the building, and so that is a need that we are looking to address as well. State of the City on Thursday, three schools, including Mitchell, for their 9/11 memorial service on Friday morning. The D-11 Staff Game for Air Force was a fun rainy event. My five-year-old, which is my oldest, cried the whole time under a poncho. My three-year-old, first daughter, tough as nails, just enjoying it and looking around. But we had a fun time tailgating and seeing all the different things come by our D-11 tent. So, would like a rain check on that for actually getting to see a flyover and some parachuters would be fun, too. But anyway, and then, let's see. I only have three schools left on my site visit list, so I'm knocking those out. I think that's it. We've got a lot of good things happening and excited.
As you were talking about Mitchell, some of the pictures that we took from Mitchell, I shared with the community. That was really a touching ceremony out there. A lot of the students weren't, it makes us old, that's what it does, because none of our students that are at Mitchell were alive when 9/11 happened. It was 21 years back, and...
But the honor and respect was still there.
Yep.
Yeah. And we celebrated a Mitchell graduate, just like you, Shayna, and we celebrated her at that ceremony that morning as well.
Ms. Catherine Yancy Bori, and her family was there. She tragically lost her life on 9/11 as she was a flight attendant in one of the planes, and she was a Mitchell graduate. And we got an opportunity to honor her, and her family was there, and Superintendent Gall delivered a message out there. And our JROTC did an amazing job out there. And there's another picture too. That's it. Yeah. So, it was good to honor them. Thank you. Thank you. Are you done, Director Jorgensen?
Yeah. There you go.
Can I get out of order? Can you go back one picture?
Yeah. Okay. I don't, okay, there you go.
Okay. This picture came up, and I'm remiss in not mentioning Scott Elementary School that had the SWAT team out, that had the K-9 squadron out, that had the fire engine out, that had the ambulance out. If those children don't grow up to be one of those four, I'll be surprised. I just wanted to call them out as well.
Yeah. And I was out there too, so I think Director Jorgensen was there, and I think other Board members might have been there. And that's a really good celebration that that school does every time right before 9/11. And when you see all those students lined up on Austin Bluffs and they're waving the flags, all the cars that are driving by honk at them, and they are just so proud that they made those flags. And when you talk to them, each one of them show the pride in what they share with you, how they made it. And then to have the dogs, the K-9 unit out there, and our first responders out there, our cops and the police talking about drugs and not to use them. And so, it was a great moment to celebrate with our community, and we are doing it for a reason, and that's in that picture. Thank you for the people in service. So, thank you. Director Hart.
Thank you. Something else, some of our students might grow up to be our medical detectives, doctors and nurses today. I was able to go to Mann, and they had a medical detectives class for 7th grade. And you'll be glad to know that I was diagnosed with cholera, or not, by some of the students. Some are still trying to work out what was wrong with me. And there was also, like, one volunteer parent had Zika and another had Lyme's disease. And the students had to go through and ask us lots of questions and diagnose us. And it was just a lot of fun to see our students teamwork, for one thing, and working together to try and figure out what was wrong with these people. So, that was one fun note, just in addition to some of the other visits we've all been able to do. One other note, Director Daniels and I, in early September, were able to go to the Casby Regional Meeting and just discuss governance and why our story matters as a district. And, you know, these are our stories, and sharing them about the wonderful things our staff are doing, I think that's incredibly important, and our volunteers can do, too. So, I will get, we have a couple of papers from that that we'll pass on to you all, once we can remember to bring them and get them copied. So, thank you.
Thank you for that report. Director Daniels.
Thank you to all of our new employees and staff. D-11 is shifting tremendously with, thank you for being here with us, and we know that you're going to be working hard, and we appreciate you. I just want you to know that, along with all of the extra that you're doing for supporting your family as well as supporting, I will say, my family. So, thank you tremendously. It's good to see you. Yes.
Thank you. Director Nelson.
Director Hart, I'll be praying for your cholera. I wanted to just give a shout out to our community members and parents and staff that participate in our different DAC committees. I attended the Budget Subcommittee Meeting last night and watched the recording of the accreditation meeting that happened on Monday night, and it just amazes me how much time and energy people invest into supporting the district and supporting our students. And wanted to also just let people know that there's still a need for more... um, there's still a need for more participation, more people to come alongside. So if you have any desire to volunteer in a way, this is one way that you can. And um, you know, look into your local neighborhood school SAC and become a member of the SAC. And then, you know, possibly join the DAC and then the subcommittees that fall under. Because there's a lot of uh, really important work happening in these uh, meetings. And those committees help guide us as a board that then lead the district. And so, um, just consider how you might step up and um, further support our students. So, thank you for those who are already doing so much work. It's amazing. I mean, uh, there'll be information we're covering later tonight that the Accreditation Committee covered and just so many thoughtful questions and um, just helping make our schools better for our kids. So, thank you.
So thank you Director Nelson. That reminds me that uh, the call, call is out there for parents to serve in your school accountability committees and DAC and um, uh, I know at least two board members and I'm looking at Director Daniels and myself, we started at School Accountability Committee, DAC, and now we are sitting up here. So you don't know where that path is going to lead if you start at the School Accountability Committee. So, um, yeah, please, um, I encourage you to join those committees at the school level and uh, serve. Director Loma.
Well, I um, I, I'm getting in the swing of things again. Um, you know, I'm, I'm a data freak. I like, I love the research and everything. And and, well, this will be our first year really out of the pandemic. It, it, we get to go forward and and um, but um, even though we, we're starting off great, uh, we're um, I think we have a a top, top shelf superintendent. And he's, he's established his staff and we're ready to do good things for our students. Um, but I just want to let the public know that we recognize that um, that there's a, a population of students that have not fared well. Uh, the majority have been minorities, black, Hispanic. And um, and we don't take that lightly. And I know this board is challenged by that. And but I, I also recognize that um, it wasn't the pandemic that did that, did this to our students. Um, it was the policies of previous boards and, and previous or, and current stakeholders that decided to do things that weren't healthy for our kids. Uh, and, but I know, uh, speaking for me, that we're gonna do all, all, all we can to rectify that. We're gonna work, we have to work extra hard. We're gonna work extra hard, doubly hard. And, and I just want to let the, everyone know that I, I, I've had the pleasure of, of meeting the staff, his staff. I've known some for a while. And I know every one of them um, took it to heart. And, and I'm confident that we're gonna do uh, great things here in D eleven. And I'm, I'm looking forward to a, a good year. God bless.
Thank you Director Loma. And I'm going to hold you on that, that you're going to work doubly hard and extra hard. So, I'm going to call all those Friday meetings so you can be here for that. Uh, okay. So with that, I don't see any other board members. I'll wrap up with some comments. Um, and you can roll the pictures, Melissa, when you have a, a, opportunity. Um, uh, this morning, uh, Superintendent Gall was here and um, I was here, Board Vice President Jorgensen and uh, Director Art was here. And um, we got the State Board out here recognizing, and that was the picture that was taken, Director. Uh, Superintendent Gall and Principal Butcher made a presentation about our schools and how we are celebrating the hundred and fifty year anniversary at this point in time and uh, uh, the history behind District eleven. And we got an opportunity to have some time in front of the State Board and uh, share ho- our success story, what we are doing, what uh, how we are uh, uh, meeting every kids where they are in their K-11 educational journey, journey, and providing the supports and resources each one of our students needs so they can exceed their potential. And uh, it was good that, that the State Board uh, ended up having a resolution out here and the Vice President, Vice Chair, uh, Steve Durham read the resolution, um, recognizing District eleven for a hundred and fifty years of service in our community. I'm sure at a prominent location within this admin building, we will display that resolution loud and proud, so we can uh, share that with our community and the uh, recognition that we received from um, uh, the State Board. So, um, thank you to the State Board and hopefully they have another productive day of work tomorrow up here. Um, uh, then I wanted to share, uh, I was at the Friday night Dordi Coronado football game and I got to be on the sidelines and that was quite a, a treat for me to be by the sidelines. And uh, if you go back to the previous picture, Ms. Olson. Uh, and I'm looking at Principal Latimer here and I found out that his son plays for Dordi team and is Solomon Latimer. He made, I think, uh, he and there was another running back, I forget his name. Uh, they were scoring touchdown after touchdown. So, it was just good to see the energy and excitement in the stands. And that's something that has been missing for two years. The excitement with the students there, you can feel the energy. They are all cheering their team and uh, getting those students and that, that's what high school is about. They've missed that uh, get together, that social atmosphere for the, uh, for the last two years. And then I also got to see that they fly these drones up in the air. And uh, the broadcast that is going on YouTube is with these drones. High-tech compared to what it used to be fifteen or twenty years back. Uh, and I thought it was one of our students who was operating the drones. Uh, maybe it's an opportunity for our students, but it wasn't. It was uh, somebody from an outside group that was um, uh, doing it. And they were operating the drones out here and you can see that one of the drones on the uh, ground out there. So, um, and Ms. Colback, I got to meet your husband out there and I got to talk with him for football for quite a bit of time. I didn't realize he, he was your husband. He introduced himself as Dave and somebody said you should ask him his last name. And I did. And then I put the two and two connection together. So I, I enjoyed the conversation with them too about wrestling and uh, high school football and um, college football. So, um, and Texas almost won and they didn't. Uh, just about, they had an upset on, uh, because that's what I was talking with them about. So, the next, um, and then I got to go up to uh, where uh, the, they were calling out the games out there. And this is Mr. Barry Reed. And uh, uh, he is the commentator that's calling out the games and I was right behind him. And the cool thing with it is the uh, student on the left is a, is a student. That's what I was coming to. That um, he's a Palmer, junior Palmer student. Uh, he's a junior at Palmer. Let me get his name reversed, Paul Baranek. So, uh, what Mr. Reed uh, shared with me is that uh, these students earn credit and spend some time in the summer with them. So he introduces them to broadcasting. And now the students get to do that during a game. And they get to dabble in it. And maybe he's going to be the next Al Michaels. Um, so, we never know. So, uh, but it was just cool to stand, ju- just exciting to stand behind them and hear our student call the game. And this is being broadcast on YouTube. Um, uh, I got to share some comments with them during halftime. So I really enjoyed the time and thanks for the, and I would encourage all board members, if you have time, go for a Friday night football game at Gary Berry Stadium. That's uh, an awesome atmosphere and uh, go before the weather turns cold. So you can enjoy. It was cold that day, but it was still a good atmosphere to go and watch our, and Superintendent Gall, you should bring the D eleven flag out there. And I'm sure they would appreciate that. Uh, going, uh, okay, I, I, we already talked about Scott and um, let me see. Okay, uh, I, the Scott and Mitchell and, and I talked about. And this is a picture I wanted to share. Just a couple of days back, I got this text message. And I don't know if anybody recognized who the gentleman in that picture is. It's uh, Dr. Nick Glidditch. Okay. He is in Oregon enjoying his vacation and with his dog. He sent me another picture of him and his wife out there. And uh, I haven't asked his permission, but I think it's okay for me to share this picture with him. I just wanted to thank him again for what he did, for taking four months of his life. That's what he should have been doing. He was retired. He should have been doing that all along. Uh, but he took four months of his life and helped us uh, get on the right track. Uh, so, uh, with that, um, I'm done. So, thank you. Moving on, uh, Superintendent's Report.
Uh, I think if we go back to that slide, I think that's also the uh, Rocks from the Goonies. If anyone remembers.
You said?
So if somebody can Google that while I'm going through my Superintendent's Report.
Maybe it is. I never put the connections.
Um, but I don't want to date myself on the Goonies. But thank, thank you, Dr. Mel Pakem and to the school board. Uh, it is not common for me to comment on public comment. But there were, you asked me to make comment on my time at Palmer. But I want to start first on the comments at Mitchell because it is also connected to the UIP that you will hear tonight. So first of all, I believe it's Che, is that right? I really appreciate you bringing to light that the work of the school district is to ensure that we are providing uh, not just adequate, but uh, excellent educational opportunities for all our students. I hope that you will see and feel that tonight in the UIP that comes forward. And it will also connect to what we saw to the, in the nine eleven ceremony. If you want to go back to that picture, Melissa, to the nine eleven ceremony. Um, I had an epiphany as I sat for nine eleven uh, in the ceremony there on Friday. And I watched a hundred and fifty plus young men and women of Mitchell High School in the junior ROTC, display both practiced, dedicated and committed efforts to caring for one another. The comment came earlier that not a single one of those children were alive when nine eleven happened. Yet they stood there and displayed the utmost respect to the family members and the others in attendance, which were also first responders, in a way that I thought to myself, if I could just replace the term nine eleven memorial event and make it ninth grade English class, how much success could we have at Mitchell? So how do I find the power of what is happening for those hundred and fifty young men and women? And get that to happen into every one of the periods and every one of the passing moments in Mitchell High School. I think if we can do that collectively together, we will then make you Che and the rest of the proud graduates of Mitchell, Mitchell High School sure that we're on the right path going forward. Uh, to Amy, Ally, Beth and Sunny from Palmer High School. Ms. O'Connor, I think you're still here in the back, are you? I thought I saw her just a moment ago. Um, I, myself and the Facilities Director, our Executive Director of uh, F-Toc, uh, Mr. Terry uh, Siemens went over to Palmer this afternoon to take a, a walk. And yes, it's colder today than it has been several days of the week. So we were not there to make a false positive and say it's not hot here. It is clear that that is an older building that has not been properly ventilated or cooled for many, many years. Um, I wished I could pull out a seven hundred million dollar check out of my back pocket to fulfill the back maintenance and under-resourced facilities needs for the district, but I cannot. Um, but what the, you do have for me at Palmer and any other school, suffering from um, both heat and or cooling issues is the commitment that we will find at least an intermediary, intermediary localized temporary solution. But I need you to remain open-minded to what those may be. Um, so I've asked Terry to provide uh, for me by the end of this week, all open work orders on mechanical systems in schools that have to provide heated or cooled air. And I've also asked the principals in those schools to think very creatively about where there is and where there is not conditioned air within those buildings and how we are maximizing the use of those spaces first and foremost. Uh, and uh, we'll uh, continue to, to monitor that. So now I want to switch to my normal Superintendent's Report and get a couple of celebrations out. First and foremost, uh, I heard Director Loma talk ver- so eloquently about the extension of the school being more than just what happens in the classroom. And so at Madison Elementary School, I'd like to recognize two crossing guards. Jueta Smith and Laura Langston, are you here this evening? Can you come forward? You mean? You got, I know, I, so I'm just gonna, uh, if you could just stand here in front of the podium for a second. Darian, you can come forward too as the principal. Um, the, 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 the beginning and the end of the school day is oftentimes met first and foremost by either a bus driver or a crossing guard. And so in the uh, opening and closing scenes of Forrest Gump is of course the uh, the bus driver, if you remember that movie. And for our walkers, those are our crossing guards. And without going into great detail, I just want to celebrate the two of them for being eyes on and smart and noticing a young child who turned left to go home with a friend instead of to turn right to go home to mom. And when mom didn't find said child, we were able to reach out and crossing guards say, I saw a young child go left and we found them at a friend's house. And so, uh, thank you both for what you do every day. And uh, I have a coin of appreciation that I will bring over to you.
So while you're coming back, I want to uh, talk to Jueta too. And I've known her for ten years or so, ten, twelve years. She used to watch my kid in Sunday school. Uh, and she did the same thing out there. You know, uh, she would make sure that uh, the kids are taken care of. And she's been doing that forever. Thank you.
And if I could get the uh, members in the audience from Phi Beta Sigma and from Edison Elementary School to come forward. Um, again, as an extension of what it is that we do as schools, every school deserves a strong community partner. No one can do this work alone. Teaching is hard. Teaching in uh, situations where you are either under-resourced or feeling as if students are further behind is harder. And doing that under the pressures that exist within the Colorado Springs District, School District eleven can be the, the most extreme. Having partners who stand by your side in both the smallest and largest of ways can be critical to a school's success. And so Phi Beta Sigma did a fundraiser, happened to be around a golf tournament. I wasn't invited, but I would have loved to have played. Uh, but I really want to call them out for raising over four thousand dollars. That gives Principal uh, Kevin Willis the opportunity to spend at his discretion, which I believe you're gonna use for some sporting equipment opportunities in the gym. Is that correct? Yeah, thank you. So I'm gonna come coin you all as well. Next slide. Uh, I promised the um, the uh, board a brief staffing update. And so although I do like to celebrate the things that are going well, I also want to make sure that we are addressing the challenges because we do have a long way to go in District eleven to get to ensuring that all of our children exceed their expectations. A couple of successes from staffing. I tasked Chief Bailey to make sure that we will be the first to hire in El Paso County. I'm tired of being at the end of the line. Uh, if we are the first ones out advertising for our positions, I believe that we can get people excited to come back to the heart of the city and secure their talents going forward. And so I want to thank her for the work that she's um, uh, moving to be able to do that. She's met with the three employee groups who are working on adjusting their retirement timelines such that we can be predictive of where our openings are gonna be and offer those contracts first. And then for just our normal uh, openings, I've asked Chief Bailey to make sure that we are hiring faster. I think I actually said half the amount of time that it takes. And so I want to thank her for identifying what some of the waiver uh, options are for us to accelerate the hiring. We have a lot of challenges in ensuring that we can attract talent. But what we don't want to do is wait on our own ability to make sure that people are ready to go. So I want to thank her. And you can see these are some of the places where the pop waiver uh, will be most impactful for us to be able to hire. Next slide. I want to give a little bit of a breakdown. We do still have some real staffing challenges. If you go to other board meetings within Pike's Peak Region as well as across the country, you will see similar challenges. So this is not a whoa is me, D eleven storyline. This is that there is a real challenge in America right now in getting people to see that there is value in the work that we do every day. So we have, um, you'll see here the existing openings in elementary, middle and high school. Uh, what I want to break that down is that's about one educational support personnel per elementary school. That's about three per middle school. That's about six per high school. So if you think, and these are our, our aides, our adjuncts, these are our support, operational support positions, being down six individuals in a high school will have dramatic impact on that school's ability to function. So I want to thank Director Loma for calling out how shiny the floors were in a particular school. All our shores, all, all our floors should shine at that same level. We shouldn't be mitigating that risk. Our two greatest areas of need are our food nutrition services and transportation. Many of you parents have seen the challenges we've had in transportation. We will work our hardest to reinvent and find new ways to solve old problems. Uh, but we will be, it'll be a long time before we find seventy-two food nutrition service uh, support personnel and twenty-two bus drivers. Uh, for teacher vacancies, uh, we are under a hundred, which I am proud to report, but We are 18 teachers short at Mitchell High School and 11 teachers short at Mann Middle School. I will, hats off to the other high school principals who are coming up with creative ways to contribute some of the teachers that they have on staff on a volunteer basis to go over and deploy to ensure that we can fill that gap in Mitchell High School. The takeaway here is that our candidate pool is shrinking, and they are motivated differently than the way we were motivated to come to education. We, as the superintendent and the school board, need to think harder about how it is that we're attracting talent. We will never be able to pay $25 or $30 an hour for a bus driver. We cannot find them even at that price point. The opportunities for skills trade is so much higher in the commercial sector that we have to rethink how it is that we supply those opportunities. And for our teacher corps, we have to think, how are we going to attract a new pipeline of teachers as they come out of education? And how can we continue to provide the correct training and supports for any alternative or emergency certifications? There are articles across the country, there are districts in great need for teachers. We have to be the district that thinks differently about it to ensure that our students have the right representation. Next slide. I'll let everybody read this. This is a long slide to say that we are face-to-face in office. There have been a lot of rumors that there is teleworking happening at central office. There is a teleworking policy which will not change. That teleworking policy gives us the flexibility as a school district to be able to do remote days when conditions exist, but the mandate to all chiefs and all their executive directors at central office is this is a relationships-based district, we are face-to-face. If somebody is not in their office, they are not in their office because they have been approved to not be in their office for an individual need by their supervisor. Nobody is working from home on Tuesdays and Thursdays. If you know of somebody that is working from home on Tuesdays and Thursdays, please let me know. That will be the last Tuesday and Thursday that they work. From home, I want to share for you some enrollment opportunities. We are very excited about the enrollment campaign that we have in full swing right now, and I want to celebrate some wins and then again, once again, address some challenges. As you heard, I'll really call out Queen Palm Elementary School, up 17%. I heard a comment earlier this evening in public comment on Coronado is beating projections by 8%. And then you can see the real winners up there, Rudy Audubon, Madison, and Jenkins are all killing it. Which didn't make the slide, which is my oversight, is our adult ed program. Our adult ed program at the Wausen campus is up a whopping 32%. Projected at 491 and already enrolled, 649. And make no mistake, that is telling you that the demographic of our community is shifting. Adult education is much about opportunities for folks to get language skills in their adult years. There were many other things that we do in adult education, but the man's signal is strong, and we are happy for leadership over there. We do still have some challenges. Trailblazer is one of our border schools up on District 20. Just did some strong revisioning on their strategy going forward. I want to thank Dr. Comfort for that. But they are still losing a lot of their boundary population to District 20, just up over the hill there. Twain Elementary School, Russell Middle School, and Mitchell High School also struggling a little bit on their enrollment numbers. But I do want to call out Mitchell for having beat their ninth grade projection. So again, as you look at the UIP that comes forward this evening on the plan going forward for Mitchell, something's happening that's communicating to rising eighth graders that there's an opportunity at Mitchell. So now, how do we hold those ninth graders at 90, 95% retention, move them to the 10th grade, and then replace them in the matriculating eighth to ninth graders? If you do that and you forecast that number, now you're looking at a 1,200, 1,300, 1,400 population at Mitchell High School, which would be near capacity. So thanks to the enrollment team. Big shout out for our communications team, Chief Dever Ashby. We're already leaning forward into count. We were very hard in opening schools, and we've now shifted to counting the kids in schools. This is the way that we supply teachers and programs over the course of the year. We have to be counted accurately, and so anyone and everyone who has a child in the system, please come to school on October 3rd so you can be counted. The teachers and the programs in the building depend upon it. Our messaging will go out via Facebook, our District 11 websites, our Instagram, Twitter, newsletters, marquees, so on and so forth. Thank you to Dever and the team. This is Survivor Island. Both Mindy Abbott and myself, Mindy from King Elementary School, were the last two remaining District 11 folks in the stands as Air Force took a thumping on top of Colorado Buffaloes. But what I really want to do is thank anyone who came out to our tailgate. There were a couple of takeaway moments. The first was, our staff are really dying to be celebrated, and it was just a lot of fun to spend an hour or two with not just district employees, we had several contracted employees who were also there, who just wanted to have some fellowship before a football game. Now, the weather didn't really cooperate, but maybe that gave us a little more time under the tent. And secondly, so many passer-bys would look up at our tent, and they would see our D11 flag, and they would just randomly tell me what D11 school they went to 20, 30, 40 years ago. Our community runs very deep, and the messaging on us being the heart of the city, I think, is really going to start to resonate and get a lot of traction, not just with the people who are here now, but the people that we have served for the 150 years that we celebrate. So thank you, Mindy, for sticking it out with me there at the end.
And you had to rub it in by putting the score at the bottom of the screen.
Oh yeah, I'm sorry. Did I tell anybody that Air Force won? There's a lesson there, and I don't want to get into the politics of athletic departments. University of Colorado has got to be six, seven times the size of the Air Force Academy. And I just, I don't mean by size of student population, even on the offensive and defensive lines. Those are some big fellows out there. But the Air Force Academy just, do you hear my voice squeak? I had a Peter Brady moment. The Air Force Academy has commitment and excellence just inbred into everything that they do. And so they, you know, we were sitting with some folks that didn't really know football that were CU fans, and they kept saying, "Are they going to run the same play over and over again?" And I said, "Yes," because they run the same play over and over again better than anyone can defend it. And so they just practice, they are disciplined, they have very high expectations, so hats off. And I will make the shout out that my classmate from 1989, Troy Calhoun, happens to be the head coach. So mighty fine '89 wins again. Okay, next slide. And I would be remiss to not mentioning that today is Sherry's birthday, so. One more slide, and that's it from the Colorado Springs School District 11. We rock. Back to you, Dr. Mel Pakem.
I see how you added "the" out there, the article out there in front of Colorado Springs School District 11. Happy birthday must call back. Maybe we can sing a happy birthday song at the end of the board meeting, not now. Moving on, thank you. Board members, do you have any comments or questions? Director Nelson.
Just really quick, you may have said this and I didn't catch it. The percentages that you listed on our schools with the enrollment, is that on projection? We're up from projection or we're up from enrollment last spring?
Those are over-projection, but all the ones that we predicted over-projection are actually over-year-to-year enrollment as well.
Oh, that's amazing.
But it's a bigger number over-projection.
Yeah, but great to hear that we even are above last spring. Great.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, we look forward to seeing what the October count is going to be when all is said and done. Any other questions or comments for Superintendent Gall? So thank you for being at the Air Force game, and I was planning on coming there. I looked at the weather, and I thought like, okay, I think my time would be spent wiser at home, so. But it looks like Vice President Jorgensen was out there, so. Moving on to consent items, adoption of consent items. Director Loma, can you please make the motion to adopt the consent items?
I move that the Board of Education adopt all consent items as designated in the agenda. You want me to read them all?
Yep.
All right. The consent items are E2 approval of August 24, 2022 regular meeting minutes. E3 approval of personal recommendation for September 14, 2022. E4 approval of resolution 2023-01. FY 2022 to 23 legislation liosens.
Moved and seconded. Melissa, roll call, please.
Dr. Bankus?
Aye.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Mr. Jorgensen?
Aye.
Reverend Loma?
Aye.
Dr. Mel Pakem?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye, but I don't know if I'm allowed to say this. I think there might be a mistake on one of them. And I can circle back later.
Yeah, can you circle back?
Okay. Just that it says it's coming out of the general fund when we said "esser."
Oh, the AP will correct that.
This bar, yes. It's number 334.
Thank you.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it, the consent item has been adopted. Moving on to action items, resolution 2023-02 Hispanic Heritage Month, and I am looking forward to the reading of this resolution. We have some students here, but I will first go to Director Ott. Director Ott, can you please read the resolution 2023-02 and make the motion?
Thank you. And I think perhaps I'll make the motion after the second reading.
Absolutely.
Okay, excellent.
Or maybe the students can make the motion, but I think you would have to make the motion officially.
Yes. This is resolution 2023-2 in honor of Hispanic Heritage Month, and I will be reading it in English, and then we'll have some students read it for us in Spanish, Espanol. Whereas we celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month to honor the heritage, cultures, and vast contributions of Americans whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. Whereas this year's theme, Unidos, inclusivity for a stronger nation, encourages us to ensure diverse voices and perspectives are represented and welcomed in decision-making processes, thereby helping to build stronger communities and a stronger nation. Whereas learning about the Hispanic culture and contributions Hispanics have made in the past and will continue to make in the future helps us embrace inclusion and acceptance of each other regardless of our cultures and various backgrounds. Whereas the name of our state, Colorado, has its origin in the Spanish language. Early Spanish explorers in the Rocky Mountain region named a river they found, the Rio Colorado, for the reddish silt that the water carried down from the mountains. Whereas Colorado Springs School District 11 honors the contributions of Hispanic American students, faculties, and staff throughout its schools, and wishes to celebrate their tremendous performance and service. And whereas Colorado Springs School District 11 also respectfully appreciates the relentless work and dedication of Hispanic American parents, grandparents, and guardians who contribute their time and talents on behalf of the district, now therefore be it resolved that September 15 through October 15, 2022 be declared Hispanic Heritage Month in Colorado Springs School District 11. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education respectfully encourages each school to share in this annual tribute by celebrating the generations of Hispanic Americans who have enriched our nation and society. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Director Ott. And now I want to welcome our students. Allison Villalobos Camargo, Palmer High School senior. You can come up to the microphone out there. Amir, I'm going to get your last name wrong, so Ken Shuck. Come on up here, North Middle School. And then Angel Correio Juarez, Edison Elementary School, 4th grade. So when, in the past, when the Hispanic Heritage Resolution has been read, I've always wanted somebody from our student population, I've even talked to Ms. Hidalgo about reading it in Spanish, but it never came to fruition. But I'm glad that we got our students up here to read it. You lead us first, Ms. Allison. You can bring the microphone closer to you.
Considerando que celebramos el mes de la hispanidad para honrar la herencia, las culturas, y las vastas contribuciones de los estadounidenses cuyos antepasados vinieron de España, México, el Caribe, América Central, y del Sur. Considerando que el tema de este año, Unidos, inclusividad para una nación más fuerte, nos alienta a garantizar que las diversas voces y perspectivas estén representadas y sean bienvenidas en los procesos de toma de decisiones, ayudando así a construir comunidades más fuertes y una nación más fuerte. Considerando que aprender sobre la cultura hispana y las contribuciones que los hispanos han hecho en el pasado y continuarán haciendo en el futuro nos ayuda a abrazar la inclusión y la aceptación mutua independiente de nuestras culturas y diversos orígenes. Considerando que el nombre de nuestro estado, Colorado, tiene su origen en la lengua española, los primeros exploradores españoles en la región de las montañas rocosas nombraron un río que encontraron, el Río Colorado, por el himno rugizno que el agua transportaba desde las montañas.
Thank you. Can you introduce yourself? I got your last name wrong.
I'm Amir Ken Shuck.
Ken Shuck.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Considerando que el distrito escolar 11 de Colorado Springs honora las contribuciones de los estudiantes, profesores, y personal hispanoamericanos en todas sus escuelas, decían celebrar sus tremendos desempeños y servicio. Y considerando que el distrito escolar 11 de Colorado Springs también aprecia respete al trabajo en casabar y el dedicación de los padres, abuelos, y tutores hispanoamericanos que contribuyan con sus tiempos y talentos en nombre del distrito hará por lo tanto y hacer.
Thank you. You can, yeah, and introduce yourself.
Angel Correio. Se resuelve aún más que el cuerpo de educación alienta respetuosamente a cada escuela a compartir ese tributo anual celebrando las generaciones de hispanoamericanos que han enriquecido a nuestra nación y sociedad. En destino tenemos que poner nuestras manos y hacer que el seño oficial dicho el distrito escolar se coloque este día 14 de septiembre de 2022.
Thank you. Director Ott, can you please make the motion?
I will, thank you, and gracias. I move that the Board of Education endorse resolution 2023-2 honoring Hispanic Heritage Month.
Moved and seconded. So board members, do you have any comments before they leave? Thank you, students. Thank you, you guys were amazing. Thank you for being here and reading the resolution in Spanish. That's amazing learning that's happening in our schools. And I also want to thank Ms. Blartjet up there and Ms. Murta. I reached out to them, and they were able to find students right away that can come and read in Spanish. So thank you for finding the students for us. And thank you for the parents, too. I'm sorry I kept you so late up here. So thank you, I appreciate. Board members, any comments or thoughts? Director Ott.
Thank you. I do hope that our schools are able to celebrate this month. And for those looking in the community for an event to kick off the Heritage Month, there is Fiesta Patrias this weekend at the Pioneer Museum, and it says it's from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. So you can choose wisely to come when you want to go, but that would be a great opportunity to explore some cultural happenings. Thanks.
Thank you. Seeing no other comments from board members, roll call, please, Marisela.
Dr. Bankus?
Melissa.
Aye. Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Reverend Loma?
Aye.
Dr. Mel Pakem?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
I apologize for that. The ayes have it, the resolution has adopted. I didn't mean to call you Marisela.
It's all right.
It's...
I knew what you meant.
Moving on, CASB delegate designation, Vice President. Oh, so before we make the motion, this is something that's in front of the board. I think we need to nominate a name before we make the motion, so there was some interest in several board members that want... I apologize for that. The ayes have it. The resolution is adopted. I didn't mean to call you Marisela.
It's all right.
It's.
I knew what you meant.
Moving on, CASB delegate designation, Vice President. Oh, so before we make the motion, this is something that's in front of the board. I think we need to nominate a name before we make the motion. So, there was some interest in several board members that wanted to be the CASB delegate going forth. Is this a discussion that the board wants to have at this point in time? As far as I know, Director Ott is the current CASB delegate and has served in that capacity for the past three years. But Director Jorgensen, you expressed an interest in wanting to serve for this upcoming year. Director Ott, do you have any thoughts? I think in the past you have indicated that if there was other interest, you were willing to, you know, step aside. That's, yeah.
Yes, I'm happy to pass the torch, as it were. Just, just to let folks know, this person goes to a meeting in October. And so, that is a commitment. And it's a two-day, if, if you're willing to do the two days. If you, you can do just Saturday if you want. There are twenty-seven resolutions, twenty-seven or twenty-nine resolutions to weigh in on. And so, there's a little research involved in those, but they are currently listed on the CASB website. And whomever decides to do it, there is a CASB podcast that has some information about the how-to. And I would recommend perhaps having the CASB delegate and I would say a couple of alternates, just in case. Director Daniels and myself are already registered. But that's just something you want to clear with Ms. Hidalgo, to make sure you get registered. Thanks.
Director Jorgensen, do you have any thoughts since, do you want to add on anything to?
No. No, I, I have, it's been something I've been wanting to do, but I haven't quite had the bandwidth to, to take it on. But I do know that they offer a lot of resources and support to our district and that we have a, a voice in that as a delegate. And, and just continuing good work and getting what we can out of that organization as we move, move our district forward and serve our kids. So, happy to, to take the torch and, and carry it on for us.
Thank you. Director Loma?
Um, I just want to call, uh, let the public know, what do we pay to be a member of CASB?
Director Nelson?
I will have to get back to you on that. I thought I had it, but I realized I was thinking about board docs instead.
Thirty thousand range to be a member, nearly thirty grand.
I, I'm.
Give or take.
I'm mixing it up with CASB. I'm mixing it up with our board docs.
Well, that's strange. Somebody should know because it's a lot of money.
I can get it to you. I just don't, if you would have emailed me ahead of time, I would have prepared for it.
But, so I'm conflicted. I have no problem with Jason doing it. I have a problem with being a member of CASB. I don't think the money we spend, we get the value for it at all. Not only do we spend nearly thirty grand just to be a member, then when they do an event here in town at, at the Broadmoor, we had to pay what, eight, nine hundred? Per person to attend an event that we paid thirty thousand dollars roughly to be a member of. So, I just like, wow. It just, it shocks me. So, unfortunately, they, somebody, I guess a previous board or somebody in the middle of the night made that decision when I wasn't here. Because I would have screamed, no, don't do it, or let you know, the public know that what we're doing. But that, I didn't get a chance for that. So, I, I won't be voting for you. I'm not abstaining because I don't believe in this, in being a part of it, but I have no problem with you doing it. I do have a problem being a member of CASB. I don't think they do anything enough for us or anything, not that value. So, those are my thoughts.
So, Director Loma, just to respond back to you, at the end of the year, when the board does the budget, this is a conversation you can bring up at that time. And then the board can consider whether collectively as a school board, if there is value in this membership at that point in time. Director Nelson, did I cut you off? Can you do that again? Go ahead.
I will email you the cost. I thought I could maybe pull it up really quickly for you, but I don't want to misspeak and just have a wrong number put out there. So, I'll get that back to you. I hear what you're saying, that you have concerns about this organization. I understand that this organization has a big influence as far as state statute and what happens in education. So, I don't, I emailed the board, but I am also interested in being a backup delegate and supporting in that way and hoping that we can, as a district, help influence CASB and then our state level to focus on, you know, academic achievement and how we can support our students. And I think that, you know, I'd like to get in there and learn more myself. So, would like to put my name out there to be the backup delegate, unless if there could be multiples, which I didn't realize.
Thank you, Director Nelson. And to answer you, Director Loma, I have the number in front of me, twenty-one thousand five hundred and eleven. That was the, twenty-one thousand five hundred and eleven.
Plus, plus, plus nine hundred per board member.
To attend the, yeah. I'm just providing you the facts. This information went to Director Nelson and I was copied in on it. So, that's how I do. When, this came in the end of the academic year last year, when the membership dues were approved. Director Ott, did you have a comment? You didn't? I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you. I was, to, to your question, yes, there can be a couple of alternates. It's, I don't think it's quite fair to not comment on what else CASB does. And that might be something we bring forth, the professional development. And that is indeed a conference that we go to in December that costs that much money. But that's how much many professional development conferences would cost us. I think an incredible benefit that we have is around policy. And CASB keeps us up to date on policies as well as the legislative angle that you mentioned, Director Nelson. And we do have a new policy director who is planning to use the resources of CASB to evaluate and even overhaul our policies. So, this, whatever you might think of, of CASB in the future, this is a great year for us to be a member of CASB. So, I'll put that out there and that we should not discount the, the resources that they do offer us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else that wants to be the delegate or alternate at this point in time? I have Director Jorgensen, who wants to serve as the delegate. And I had Director Nelson put in her name for an alternate. And Director Ott and Director Daniels, Director Daniels, are you still interested in serving as an alternate? Okay, okay. So, then I have Director Jorgensen and then Director Nelson and Director Daniels as the alternates. Is that good? Okay, can, then we... Yeah, I'm not going to ask you to make a motion and nominate yourself, so I will ask Director Bankus. Can you please make the motion for action item F four? I'm sorry. There you go.
I move that the Board of Education designate the delegate and alternate delegate for twenty-twenty-two CASB Fall Delegate Assembly. Jason Jorgensen and alternates are Lauren Nelson and Darlene Daniels.
I need a second. Moved and seconded. Since we've had this discussion, roll call please. Melissa.
Dr. Bankus?
Aye.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Reverend Loma?
President?
Dr. Malpakum?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
The ayes have it. So, Director, Vice President Jorgensen is the delegate. And we have two alternates, and Director Nelson and Director Daniels. So, thank you. And what we expect from the board is regular updates as and when you attend those meetings, provide us an update. Thank you. Moving on to non-action item. Okay, this first item is the Board of Education and Superintendent Working Agreement. I want to set this up and then open it up for the board to have some discussion. If you can pull up the documents that are attached to board docs, Melissa. So, we've had a couple of board retreats where we, where the board has had an opportunity to work one-on-one with Superintendent Gall. And both of those board retreats were highly productive, engaging conversations that took place. We collectively put in about six hours of work between those two days, facilitated by Dr. Walt Cooper, who was a prior superintendent in Cheyenne Mountain School District. And the result of it is, we developed a working agreement between the superintendent and the board. This was collaboratively achieved by the board, providing input and listening to the feedback that came from Superintendent Gall. And we are going to share that in full transparency with the community so that you are aware of what we are getting into. So, I'll wait as Ms. Olson is pulling up that document. The, essentially, the agreement is that we each have a certain set of responsibility. The board, providing the guidance and the policies, and the superintendent in charge of the operations of the district. Yes, that's the document. So, we can see the orange and the blue. And level by level, it goes on to say what the role of the superintendent is and what the role of the board is. So, this way, it's clearly defined what our respective roles are. And then we each get to stay in our lanes and then we can collaborate together to provide leadership for the district. And then we have a second working document. If you pull the second attachment in board docs, yeah. If you go back to board docs up there, yeah, the performance objectives. And this was the collective guidance or directive from, directive from the board to the superintendent, knowing fully well that we need, that we, we want accountability built in the system. And what can we hold the superintendent accountable for in the first four months? We provided a clear guidance plan to the superintendent. And these are the expectations that we want from the superintendent by the end of January twenty-twenty-three. A communication plan, an instructional support training and professional development plan. That includes for all our instructional staff, support and administrate, administrative administration. And these plans are ordered in the order of priority. We want, you know, the, we talked about an enrollment report, providing a comprehensive report to the Board of Education for future strategic plan to maximize student enrollment. And then an interim assessment report. All our students are being assessed at the beginning of the school year. That is the baseline. And in December, there will be a mid-year assessment. Now, based on that report, Superintendent Gall would be able to provide some recommendations to the school board and then a marketing plan. So, these are the five plans that we have requested from Superintendent Gall in collaborative agreement. And he knows these are the expectations. So, we want to formally adopt this agreement and make this transparent to our community that these are our expectations. And the goal in this is to put our students first and our staff along with that. There has to be clear expectations that we are aiming for excellence over and over again. That's kind of been our mantra right from the very beginning, that we are not going to settle for anything less than excellence. And with that, I'm going to look to my board colleagues. Do you have any comments that you want to add from the couple of board retreats that we had? Any thoughts that you want to add to this conversation? Director Bankus, did you have your microphone on?
No.
No, okay, I'm sorry. Director Jorgensen?
Yeah, I would encourage some folks to, there's two one-page documents for us to look at. I think we went into this ambitious and maybe a little bit of too much things to focus on. And in our retreat last week, we did have a chance to really pare things down and get to the meat of what we're looking for in our relationship. And everything just being so positive so far, that, you know, we, we really wanted to make it measurable, knowing that some things can't be measured in four months for us to have an accurate, you know, estimation on things. And that some things are going to be qualitative and, and in feeling more than just, you know, quantitative of, of metrics. So, this is a good blend of that. I appreciate the work that Walt helped us do with this. And looking forward to seeing the, the progress with our new superintendent and the changes we've already had so far. So, this is a good, good looking for me, so.
Director Ott?
Thank you. I did have a constituent ask me about the numbers, you know, looking at number three there. As indicated, a goal number four, a performance objective number two document. Perhaps we could add to the board docs that, the objectives paperwork, too. Thank you. Other than that, I would say, yes, collaboration, a lot of hours. Glad that part's settled.
Thank you. Just to make it clear, we, as a board and the superintendents, settled on two performance objectives. Performance objective number one was increased student outcomes. That's academic outcomes, overall well-being of our students, so student achievement and student growth. That was performance objective number one. Performance objective number two was address student enrollment in the district. So, when you see performance objective number two, it is talking about addressing student enrollment. Any other comments or thoughts on this? Okay, thank you. Superintendent Gall, do you have anything to add on to this?
No, I really appreciate the facilitation by, by Mr. Cooper, former Superintendent Cooper. I think it's helpful for us to be in a space and have somebody managing the conversation to keep us on board priorities and the items that we need to deliver on behalf of our students, staff, and community. I look forward to meeting these objectives.
Okay, thank you. This item will move on to action and the board will formally adopt it a couple of weeks from now. But this gives an opportunity for our community to take some, have, put some ice on it and provide some feedback to the board if you want to over the next couple of weeks. What are your thoughts about what we have up here? Moving on to the next item, this item is new information. This is, we are going to be talking about the Unified Improvement Plan. Superintendent Gall, I turn it over to you.
Thank you, board, and thank you, community, again, for starting to adopt the language of academic achievement and holding us accountable. This is the work of the district. You've heard my mantra of not meeting expectations but exceeding them and exceeding our potential. As we get ready to go through these four UIPs, what I hope that the board sees is a little bit more standardization. This is not a test and evaluation of an individual principal. This is the continuity and the coherence and alignment of an entirety of a system to ensure that we're delivering outcomes for our children. I also want to give a special shout-out to my new chief academic officer, our new chief academic officer, our new chief academic officer, Tamara Acevedo, who is instrumental in trying to get us to that place of coherence and alignment on what it is that we say that we want to do and then how we are actually going to do it. And then certainly to the area superintendents and the principals that you will hear from today, who spend the preponderance of their waking and sleeping hours constantly mulling over how it is that we're going to make the impossible possible. And I look forward to your comments and suggestions from these briefs. Go ahead. Sher, are you first? Your birthday, so you're first? I hope that's the way the slides are, so go ahead.
Actually, I think we'll start with the elementary schools this evening. But there are a few pieces to be aware of in terms of changes for, from the state this year. And it's also helpful, helpful to provide just a bit of context. In Colorado, USIPs, Unified School Improvement Plans for Priority Improvement and Turnaround Schools must be approved by the Board of Education and uploaded to the Colorado Department of Education as a final document by October of each school year. Now, while we, what we upload to CDE is a final document, our plans with these schools are continually changing, adapting, and responding to data throughout the school year. We're bringing these four schools to you tonight because they meet the required criteria by the state. It should be noted that Priority Improvement and Turnaround Schools also have additional requirements from the state. You saw one of those tonight with the Required Public Comments session. There's also a written notification to parents. And area superintendents and the Education Insights Department work jointly with principals to ensure that we meet those requirements on the required deadlines. And then we also want to ensure that schools receive. And then we also want to ensure that schools receive feedback and support from a variety of sources on their plans, especially for the schools in our greatest need. The support begins during the One Plan Symposium, last May and June. Several of you were able to stop in and join us for a portion of that, and that support continues throughout the school year. And of course, our SAC team members are involved in the creation of the One Plan as well. I think you saw one of those parents, or one of those community members, excuse me, here with Mitchell this evening. Finally, due to COVID, there are some changes that impact this work that are very specific to this school year. Those changes at the state level to the School Performance Framework, or SPF, that impact the USIPS include, the state accountability system has resumed. However, automatic advancement on the accountability clock is suspended. The state is offering a request to reconsider process, and we will explore that option for any schools who are eligible for that. In creating their USIPS, schools use data from CMAS in conjunction with local data, like Acadiance at the elementary level, district benchmarks, and the Five Essentials survey to determine and identify needs and goals. And our goal collectively continues to be to move all schools off of the state clock. And at this time, I want to hand it over to Dr. Comfort. He has some additional information that is very specific to our two elementaries this evening.
Good evening, board. Thank you for the opportunity to share our school improvement plans for both West and Midland Elementary tonight. I know Ms. Newton is very eager to describe her strategy to improve student outcomes at both of her schools. As you could likely predict, due to the current school enrollment size of both West and Midland and a variety of state-level CMAS assessment factors, there's insufficient data currently, specifically in the area of student growth, for CDE to identify a transitional school performance framework for both West and Midland. Ms. Newton has a slide in her presentation that will provide a bit more information about this. But basically, over the last couple of years, we haven't had consistent tests and consistent grade levels, and so our smaller schools just don't have the N size of 20 for there to be enough students who have taken a test in one year and then again the following year to be able to give us growth data. We've had conversations with CD, and we understand that this is an issue for a number of schools across the state, so this is just not District 11. Even though West and Midland do not have formal school performance frameworks, they did go through a thorough data analysis process to identify academic gaps, their likely root cause, and a primary strategy and plan to address each root cause and improve academic outcomes. I hope that this data review will be apparent in Ms. Newton's presentation tonight. While Ms. Newton, Mr. Smith, and Mr. Miller will share their primary improvement strategies with you this evening, there are additional efforts on improving academic outcomes at each of these schools. Under our new school-centered district support model, district departments are leaning in and prioritizing their resources and supports specifically to these schools. That includes prioritize staff hiring, prioritize facility needs being addressed, marketing efforts, and most importantly, additional coaching and resources through our chief academic office. While some of those items do not directly relate to academics, what we know is if a principal is spending less time worrying about hiring and facility needs, they can spend more time coaching and growing their teachers. So all of those things matter. But as an example, something that's new this year in terms of our process to lean into schools, our content math facilitators are currently working with both Midland and West Elementary on short-cycle coaching, observation, and feedback cycles, where they're going in modeling a lesson, then coaching on a lesson, doing a data review, and helping teachers grow. This work tightly aligns with the area superintendent model on increased visibility and support in conjunction with our area instructional coaches. We're very excited about these collective efforts, focused on ensuring our schools are appropriately resourced and supported, and we think it's going to lead to some really incredible results. With that, I turn it over to Ms. Newton to share her plans with the board.
Okay. How's that? Good?
Yep.
Okay. Good evening, President Mal Packham and Board of Directors, and I would say Mr. Gall, but he had to step out, I guess. I'm a little more sure. Is that good? Okay. Yeah, I'm a little nervous, even though I've done this before. So as Dr. Comfort explained, I am the president at both West Elementary and Midland Elementary. I'm going to start by talking about West Elementary. And I'd like to start with our data story, and let's see if I can do this, our data story, and I'd like to share some bright spots and our plan for action. Looking at West through the lens of the Five Essential Survey, the school is now 10 times more likely to improve student outcomes than schools that are weak on three or more of the five essentials. You'll notice that just three years ago, we were weak, and we have moved that to become well-organized for improvement. I think another bright note that I want to add in there is that 59% of our parents at West completed this survey. So thank you for the ice cream that we enjoyed with our families at the back-to-school barbecue. The next data that I'd like to share with you is from our district benchmark, which is our Galileo data that's grades three through five. We have a celebration on our performance on the district benchmark in Language Arts. We've increased the percentage of students meeting expected growth in Language Arts to 64%. We know we're still missing the mark in math. Our teachers are excited to have a new math curriculum to implement and to have the twice-per-month support of the math facilitators from curriculum and instruction. And I'll talk more about that when I get into our action plan. The next data I want to share with you is our Acadiance reading data. Some bright spots in the West Elementary literacy data are that we set three goals last year using the CDE Amplify Progress Planning Tool. Our first goal was to make above-average progress moving students into proficiency. Our second goal was to make above-average progress moving students out of well below or red. And our third goal was to move students up a level. We met all three. You'll see in the, in the table on the bottom, there is a column there that says end-of-year goal range. That goal range is determined by the CDE Progress Monitoring Tool. It's not something that we set. But we did choose that our desired level of progress would be above average. You can see from the table at the top that as the years have progressed, we have increased in the number of students that are reaching proficient or advanced. And in the lower table, you can see, broken down by grade level, that we had two of the six grade levels meet the goal of above-average progress. We had three of the six grade levels make well-above-average progress, and one grade level made average progress. I'd like to add that all the West Elementary teachers and interventionists are now highly qualified in the science of reading, and they have met the READAC requirements to be teachers of reading. Moving to our CMAS data, when looking at our data trends for English Language Arts, the passing rate improved overall by 1% from 2019 to 2022. The data from 2020, 2021 is in there, but it's incomplete because fourth grade did not take CMAS ELA in that year. And when we look at the data another way, besides just that year-to-year percent of students meeting or exceeding expectations, I broke it down in three tables by grade level, looking at their scale score. The top one is, for example, third grade's scale score in 2019, 21, and 22, and then I show the state average scale score. And you can see that we have quite a gap. And in third grade, our gap actually increased. And in fourth grade, our gap decreased by one, and in the fifth grade, our gap decreased by 11. We're making progress, but we're not there yet. This data is clearly not as strong as our Acadiance data. But as students move into higher grades and CMAS assesses reading and writing, we know we have a challenge, and our focus on improving best-first instruction using professional learning communities, and with the coaching and support coming from our district resources, we will improve student outcomes. The next CMAS data I have to share with you is the math data. Math had a decline in the passing rate from 21% to 16%. This isn't a celebration, of course, but when you look at scale scores, you can see that the state had dips as well. Our third grade was the most impacted. The gap between the state average scale scores and West increased by seven, but our fourth grade closed the gap by seven, and fifth grade closed the gap by 14. The gap between West and the state is significant, but our teachers, again, are excited to have their new curriculum, Eureka Math, and also the Tier Two support with DreamBox. We also have the support of our new area instructional coach, and she has already been in the school and been in our PLCs. And the math content facilitators who we're working with to schedule time for them to come out and model some lessons and help get us started with this new curriculum that we're unpacking. In addition, we have also been able to reallocate the distribution of time for some of our teachers, and we have started a math intervention program embedded in the extended school day that you provided us to support teachers in filling gaps. This slide just points out what unfortunate thing happened, and Dr. Comfort mentioned this. Because testing in 2021 didn't include all students, we don't have enough data to have growth included on our SPF. And West then is going to continue to hold again on year one of priority improvement. So we have now been three years without a chance to get off the clock. This next slide is the slide that Dr. Comfort provided on what publicly reportable data is. And primarily what it addresses is what he talked about, is the size of the student group that moves forward from one grade to the next, and that's obviously how we determine growth, because it's matched students. We don't want to look at how third grade did this year and how third grade did next year and call it growth, because they're not the same kids, apples and oranges, right? So clearly, our priority performance challenges are huge. Still, it's low growth and achievement in Language Arts and Math. Making progress, but not there yet. We're focusing on a strategy for improvement that focuses on school-wide initiatives. We do have challenges in some subgroups as well, but we're first going to work with the universal and systemic improvements that will benefit all students. So we have a plan to act on this data that I've just shared with you, our North Star, so to speak, and it's going to drive our improvement. I was really happy to have the principal from Queen Palmer present tonight and talk deeply about the work of PLCs that they're doing in our school. Because our first priority improvement strategy is ambitious instruction through collective teacher efficacy. And what's that, what that is based in is PLC work. So we have a vision statement for this year. We're a school where educators believe that our goals as a community are within reach if we all work together. So we're going to extend this goal this year. It's not just West, it's West and Midland. We are going to work together. I've created a master schedule with common planning time for both schools. The schools are a mile apart. So my kindergarten teachers at West are going to work with my kindergarten teacher at Midland, and my kindergarten teacher in second grade at West is going to work with the second grade teacher at Midland. Having one track per grade level has been a handicap for teachers. So by bringing West and Midland grade-level teams together weekly and having quality PLC work with a grade-level partner, I can see that our achievement will improve. How is that going to happen? Well, the teachers now are going to collaboratively plan, assess, reflect, differentiate instruction, and reengage learners, because they're going to be working together and lifting each other up, sharing the load, not doing it just alone. Through collective efficacy in PLCs, teachers will improve each other's practice, and students' outcomes will improve. Some of the action steps that we've already started with regard to major improvement strategy one is the focused inner-school professional learning communities. They're already meeting weekly. It's exciting to me when I look up and I see a teacher headed out the front door saying, "I'm on my way to my PLC," because they're excited to be going to work with a partner and share in the planning and the data. Our PLCs are attended by our teaching and learning coaches. They don't drive them, they don't facilitate them, the teachers do, but they are there to support them and provide resources. Our building leadership, myself and my assistant principal, Carolyn Graham, our area superintendent, Dr., I'm going to forget his name because I'm, Dr. Comfort, Brandon, and our area instructional coach are also observing and coaching PLCs. All of our benchmark data has been analyzed, and interventions have started at West in reading and math. Twice a month, we're going to have Eureka support provided by the content facilitators coming from curriculum instruction. We have already rolled out the best-first instruction, Schoology, professional development, so we're in process there. And we are not, we're kind of in the zero year of Kagan. I have a small group with myself that are going to the trainings this year, so we're just dipping our foot into Kagan strategies and introducing them to staff at staff meetings so that they can experiment and implement some of them in their classroom. They're seeing how they work because we're using Kagan strategies in our staff meetings. Our second major improvement strategy is family, school, and community partnerships. And our vision statement here is that we are a school where we build relationships with our families to create healthy and balanced learners now and in the future. 100% of our families are not currently connected to the school communication tools or attending our school events. And if parents in the community don't know what's happening at school or in classrooms, they don't have the opportunity to support learning. Our strategy through consistent communication and collaboration will provide stakeholders at West the opportunity to work together with the school to provide students with a deeper understanding of their learning. The action steps that we've already begun for major improvement strategy two are first around parent engagement and communication. We held our back-to-school barbecue and meet-the-teacher event at West. About 65% of our children were there, so them and their families. We had dinner, they met their teacher, dropped off their supplies, got to check out their classrooms. It was a great community-building event. One of the other things that we're doing, and I heard some conversation about attendance, is our teachers are now making attendance calls when a student misses two days to say, "Hey, how's Johnny? He hasn't been in class. Is there anything I can do to support him, to get him back to school?" We also have, you know, contacts that we make with our community liaison, with our social worker, with my assistant principal and myself, calling families, going out, trying to provide supports, and attendance is very important to us, and we'll continue to be aggressive at trying to make sure it stays high. As of right now, we have 79% of our parents that are connected to Class Dojo, and that was one of our goals, is to get 100% of our families connected, and that way they're receiving that communication that comes not just in their email but on their phone. So it's a quick way for a teacher to get information. So it's a quick way for a teacher to get information out and the school can use it as well. And we can do school-wide announcements to all the kiddos. Community engagement is also something that we want to be involved in. We attended the D11 150-year celebration. We had a booth and activities for kids to be involved in. Some community partners that we've been working with lately, Adopt a Classroom has been working with West. They were with us last year and this year. Hugh Burger Subaru donated $10,000 and that money got distributed to our teachers via Adopt a Classroom. And the way that works is they get an email that says, "Here's your money." And then they can log into educational sites and order materials for their classroom instead of spending their own money on those wants, not needs. We provide all the needs. Teachers do have wants, though. We also have some other great community partners, like Dick's Sporting Goods has given $3,000 to West for sporting equipment and for PE and also for recess. Scholastic Books has been partnering with us as well. And last year, we had a book fair where children got to select five free books. And the end of September this year, we're having another book fair with Scholastic Book Fair and then KOAA sponsoring the cost of it. And each child is going to get to select four free books to keep building their home libraries. Student engagement is also very important to us and a part of this. We have a very strong positive behavioral intervention and support program. And we've already recognized 79 of our students this year for reaching their first tier in that program. And each time they reach a tier, and we have five, there are, there's acknowledgement and rewards that they get to select from. So following that, we have a plan to deliver on these actions that we have set up. And to, essentially, what we're looking to do is monitor our progress, right? How do we know when we're doing it and when it's working? So for major improvement strategy one, twice a month, my building leadership team reviews the ONE Plan. That's the only thing we do when we come together. We open the plan and we say, "What was the action? What was the outcome?" And we're measuring those things. And when we find that we're not making it, we make adjustments. We find when we did well, it's time to do something else, right? To add the next step. So our ONE Plan is a living document. The one you have is not the one that we have now because since I had to upload it, we've added more to it and changed some of it. So it's going to continue to grow and change. We do have 10-day data cycles to review student progress through common assessments in Acadia's and in math. And in those 10-day data cycles, we are shifting students between intervention groups so that they are getting that instruction at their level of need. We don't want to meet them where they're at. They are not pulled out of instruction to go to intervention. Intervention is school-wide. So when we are putting kids in intervention groups, just like Christina Butcher mentioned, we have kids in accelerated groups and we have kids in remedial groups because we're meeting them where they're at. As a principal, one of the things I do is a continuous review of the PLC artifacts. So not only am I attending PLC meetings, I'm looking at their documents that they are uploading into our Schoology site. So they're keeping agendas, they're keeping minutes, they're sharing their data so we can see how they're moving forward. Obviously, with them moving between two schools, they can't always be in the school that they're in. So one of the things that they're also doing is opening their WebEx room when they're having a meeting so we can drop in, so Dr. Comfort can drop in if he can't be at the school. For major improvements, oh, and I left off the last one, learning walks and walkthroughs. We haven't started our learning walks yet, but we've had conversations about what they're going to look like. And that's that collaboration piece between us and the district and teachers and each other. Learning walks aren't evaluative. They're about us figuring out what we're doing right and sharing it and figuring out what we can do better and sharing those ideas as well. Major improvement strategy two, the progress monitoring, is going to come from the CDE Family, School, and Community Partnership rubric. My school leadership team is going to complete that rubric and then use it to set more actions and then to monitor our progress. And we have goals built into our USIP that say where we want to be on that rubric and by when through this year and into next because we know it's not something that you can complete overnight. We also do mini-five-essential surveys to keep track of how we're doing on parent-teacher trust, student-teacher trust, those issues that feed into the areas in the five essentials that we still want to see more growth. In addition to what we're doing in the school for progress monitoring, we have central supports coming to us. We have quarterly ONE Plan review meetings with Dr. Comfort, with Education Insights, with Curriculum Instruction. And at that point, they're looking at our ONE Plan with us and we're sharing with them our story and how we're doing. We have weekly coaching and progress monitoring from Dr. Comfort and also from, I'm going to forget her name because I've only introduced her 10 times so far. Mark C. Eichman, she's our area instructional coach. We have the bi-monthly math instructional observations where those math content facilitators are not just going to be modeling, they're going to be coming in and then watching our teachers teach and providing them with feedback. Again, not evaluative, so they don't have to be nervous about it. They can just listen to the feedback and make changes. On-demand professional development for school staff. This is one of the things that Dr. Comfort has made happen. For example, in the math curriculum, my teachers have said, "We need to see it. We've never done this before. We need to see what it looks like." One phone call and the math content facilitators are coming to model for us. It's great. I've never had this kind of wraparound support. I've been in turnaround schools and priority improvement, and the changes that this district is making at prioritizing us this year is going to make a difference. I really believe in it. And that's what I have for West for you. I have another presentation for Midland, but I'll pause and answer questions.
Let's take a, yeah. I'll start with the board. Do you have any comments or thoughts or questions? Director Bankus.
You had talked about 100% connected and you presently have 79% connected. Is there a plan in place for the other 11%?
21%.
21%, thank you.
Yes, with the goal being 100, the plan that's in place is that teachers are continuing to try to make contact with families. We do it by phone, we do it if we have an email, by email. But we're trying to get them into the dojo piece because emails get buried. We talk to families in the kiss-and-go line. We're not going to stop until we get everyone online. And we'll make home visits if we need to. My staff secretaries, both schools, are reaching out by phone to families. And when they're registering them, they're making sure at that point they talk to them about how to connect, how to connect to the D11 loop, how to connect to all those pieces of communication. Because it's not just the school. They need communication from the district sends out. Great communication. We also have a Facebook page for the school that parents look at. And our PTA has a Facebook page. So we try to connect them with all those pieces.
Is your participation at 65% at the beginning of the school year an improvement over prior years?
The participation in Class Dojo?
No, at the beginning of the school year, you had a picnic and a barbecue.
At the barbecue? I'll be honest with you. Our participation usually at back-to-school night is a big one. This is the first year we didn't do a back-to-school night. We did a barbecue. But I definitely got a lot of positive feedback from parents who said, "Why don't you always do this? This is fun and the kids get to meet their teachers before school starts." So it really, parents really felt like it took some of the fear out of it. And so it's a practice we're going to continue. And I suspect, because it was the first time we did it that way, that what will happen now is it will get bigger every year because kids and families will talk about it.
My last question. Is it too soon to make a decision on the effectiveness of teachers calling home after two absences?
I'll jump in. Just, we just started reviewing collectively as a group attendance. We review every executive cabinet. And one of the shout-outs that went out last week, and remember, you know, we're still have pockets of COVID. And although small school populations, both of Karen's schools top the charts on attendance. And so I immediately reached out to Karen and said, "What are you doing that we're not doing in other schools?" And she politely just said very simple protocols of after an absence or two, we make phone calls. And I said, "How are you doing that?" And I'll let you finish how you do that.
The primary one is the teachers. And that wasn't my idea, that was theirs. So we've talked about how important relationships are. And one of the things with attendance is if we don't talk to parents about why we need their kids at school every day, they think it's okay to go to Disneyland. And when parents want extended absences during the school year for things that are not religious observances and they're not a family loss or things like that, I sit down and talk to them about what their kids are going to lose by not being in school. And you know, they know what kids lose now by not being in school because they lost us. They lost us for the end of 2020. 2020, 2021 was an in-and-out-of-school year. The frustrations parents had with trying to figure out online and in person and both at the same time. And then even going into the following year, we still, this past year, had real struggles with attendance because of illness. But when they're not sick, we want them at school. When they're sick, they need to stay home so everybody else stays healthy.
Director Loma.
Well, I have a question, but to that point, in one of my previous lives, that's what we did. That's what I did, was go visit parents when their kids didn't come to school. And sometimes you find there's tragedy going on and a lot of stuff that we never know what's happening at home. And it shows that you care, and so I appreciate those efforts. You had a slide, maybe your second slide. I was looking for it on the docs. I didn't, I don't think we have that, your presentation. I couldn't find it. We don't, huh? But it was the one where you had the blocks, you had 2021, and you had five things around a center point of, and then you had 2020, 2021, and 2022. I think it's your second slide? And it said, "Those people, schools who do three of the five, that one." Yeah, and it says, and if, right there, "Research at least three of the five essentials are 10 times more likely to improve student learning," kind of, right? And so when I looked at that, and then I see, I was looking at, "Okay, let me see, well organized. You have the effective leader, collaborative teachers, involve families, right?" How do you measure that?
How do I measure those five components?
Yeah, I mean, it feels very subjective.
It's, the survey is completed by teachers, students, families.
So the survey?
Yes.
Yeah, so I'll interject here. This is a leading indicator. It is a nationally-recognized measure of the five essentials. There are many others. There are a measure of trust and confidence in the adult relationships and how they relate to kids. What you'll see here is a clear progression that Karen is building community. Now, you can believe or not believe that community is an essential step to delivering on the harder work or teaching kids that are further behind. The general collective decision of most school districts is to have leading indicators that will point you to then the lagging indicators if you want to go forward, Karen, to some of the challenges that exist under CMAS scores. So this is to say that we are moving in the right direction. The most pertinent question that came today to Principal Butcher was, "How long have you been doing this work?" And she said that she was hired in 2018, of which this, I don't know, is the first time she was the school spotlight. But I can tell you by the excitement that I got from her and her staff community, they're very excited to share how the payout has come over three and four years. So I hear your point on the subjectivity of five essentials. What you should be looking at are the ones that are red and orange that tell you that they have community, but the results don't show. So the other piece that was commented by Principal Newton was the ice cream social for the high participation. So oftentimes, you'll see lots of red and orange, and someone will say, "But I have community. I just didn't get the feedback because people didn't take the survey." Not taking the survey is the feedback. So when you don't get the ice cream social, it doesn't matter what the number is. The number is people don't care enough to tell you. And so yes, there is subjectivity in a survey, but it is, there, for all intents and purposes, there is not a better pre-measure or leading indicator. And so I thought it was pertinent also, the comment that came from Dr. Bankus on attendance, well, that was your comment, right? Which again, is another leading indicator. If kids are coming to school regularly and there is trust within the building, then we should see stronger results coming back. I want to applaud Principal Newton for her identification of the differentiation between high foundational skills scores coming from Acadia's and yet low outcome scores coming from CMAS. There are large challenges in many of our schools in us communicating the importance of CMAS. Sometimes there are low numbers of takers for one reason or another and/or the student and/or family does not see the value in the test itself. I don't use that to quantify why scores are low, but you will often see stair-stepping-down relationships between a lot of leading indicators and then CMAS. That, to Director Ott's comments earlier this evening, to me, that is on us. We need to convey to people the value in the measure. I don't have to like or not like standardized tests. They are a part of the system of which we are all collectively responsible for. So that's on us to be able to close the gap on that. But I just want to stamp home, we went, we were very clear in putting these briefs together to start with leading indicators on the conditions of the environment of the school, foundational skills that are starting to seep into young children who may have been turned off of school for many, many years, and then show that we're still not quite there yet. But I believe of all the UIPs you're going to see, I believe you're going to see a very clear set of dots right here that says, "This ought to be the last year that we're talking to Karen Newton about her being a priority school." Now, I know there was disclaimers by the state that this is a year that she couldn't come off the list, but she should be off the list. We just need one more year to get there. Karen, anything to add?
Thank you.
Director Daniels.
Thank you. Thank you for your work. I appreciate all that you're doing. I'm just curious about what that section of town feels like now with all of the growth that's happening like north. How is it affecting one of the oldest parts of our community, right? Like, how do we know with all of the changes happening in and around the city, it's still, it's working in the demographics? Do you get what I'm saying?
I think so. I, you know, I live on the west side. I live in the attendance area of Midland Elementary, so some of my kids are my neighbors. The area's changing. The older areas of the west side are starting to rejuvenate. Those houses that were $30,000 houses are $500,000 houses. But we do still have quite a few low-income areas as well. The diversity of our area is very different. I have two schools that are a mile apart, one school that has more Hispanic students than white students and one that is primarily white. And they're a mile apart. We're divided by Highway 24, I guess, and the hill, I don't know. But I feel the neighborhood changing, just in the five years that I've lived there.
Entry, they're maturing. And you have to have more people coming in that area with younger kids in order to fill, you know what I mean? And if it's a $500,000 house, you can get a bigger house of north instead of putting that for, what, a 100-year-old? We're talking about a 100-year-old structure with some... We're talking about a hundred year old structure with some upgrades that have to happen.
Yeah. I think, though, that enrollment tells us that we still have more kids living in our attendance area than are coming to my two schools. So the question becomes, where are they going? Why aren't they coming to us? Well, you know, if you, if you look up the performance of both of these schools, it's going to say turnaround and priority improvement. And parents look at that when they make home buying decisions. And if they decide to buy in an area with a low performing school, they think about whether or not they're going to bring their kids there. I will tell you, that the kids, the families that bring their kids to our school, stay. Because we have that sense of community, because they believe in the instruction that their kids are getting. It's not something you can see from the outside. So we've got to bring them in, and make them welcome in our schools, and let them see. And we also need those that are there to go back and communicate to their neighbors, hey, that little school over there, because they are little, is really doing a great job with our kids. Niche, have you ever looked on Niche? It's one, is a website that you can go and look up comments about schools, and they rate schools, but they're more holistic than, than just a CMAAS score. Both my schools have comments from families that talk about their kids with special needs, and how we are the place where they belong. I mean, it's just, it's something we're, we're good at, and we, we don't turn kids away, we say they're all our kids. And we meet them where they're at.
Thank you, because that's exactly what I'm looking for, in terms of how a parent chooses a specific area, if they're going to choose that side, they aren't looking for the large quarter mansion, that you maybe get with a little bit more square footage, they're going to choose that smaller intimate place, but at the same token, still get something met, for why they're.
The distant, the district coined the phrase, quality community school. And that's us, we're the neighborhood school. We're the two schools where more kids walk to school with their parents than ride the bus.
So a little more nostalgia, a little bit more, like, looking for something that we once had, versus moving into the north, where it's like, this is big, bright, and shiny, and we're going for the, you know, the bling of it all?
We have kids at Midland and West, whose grandparents went to Midland and West, and they come partly because of that. And I have a good percentage of kids permit into the two schools, even though they don't live in our area, because it's where their family went to school, and they have that connection.
It's either one or two things, right? We're going to go for the nostalgia, and what helped us to feel like we were really connected, or go to the bigger house, because we want the equity, and we want to make sure that we can move into the next generation with that wealth. So that's why, because that's what it looks like in the community, too, with all of the growth, but you still want to hold on to something and never let it go, right? So that's why I was asking, because it feels like it's shifting, just living amongst everything. And I was just wondering. So it is showing up, that's good, I mean.
And when we bring our achievement up to match that, then we're going to, we're going to catch them, and we're going to keep them.
So I do have a couple of questions. What's your current enrollment? You might have shared that, and I might have missed it. What's your current enrollment approximately?
If I don't count preschool, at West, we're at 150-ish.
150-ish.
Up and down a few every day.
How many students approximately do you think, choice out of your school district, I mean, your school that you are zoned for, how many students approximately choice out? Do you know, like?
You know, I lose some to Bristol, right? Close by, I lose some to Halbert, they both have different attractions.
Approximately, how many students?
Yeah, there is a D11 document that actually says, kids that live in my attendance area that permit into other schools. And primarily, it's Halbert, Bristol, and the Montessori School, Buena Vista. So it's neighborhood schools around me, I do not have the numbers in my head, no.
Okay.
But at least they're standing in D11.
Yeah. I don't know where they go. But when I looked up the document that's on your school website, it said about 95 students choicing out of your school.
Okay.
In the last year. I don't know what the number is this year, maybe it's lesser or more.
They could very well be, you know, because we know there are more kids around than are attending, that's for sure.
And then, like, what Superintendent Gall was talking about with that five essential data, you are set up for success, because it says out there, you are well, what is the word, well organized for improvement, and ten X times more likely to succeed. But there is a disconnect between that five essential data and your CMAAS test scores then.
Well.
It could be a leading indicator, maybe it takes time.
I think so.
Okay. Okay. Well, what is it that you need, you also mentioned that the wraparound supports that you have at your school is, this year has been something that you haven't seen before, so?
Not at this level. I mean, there's always been support, but I really feel like the district is prioritizing the priority improvement and turnaround schools. And, you know, one of the things that Dr. Comfort mentioned was hiring. Since I've been the principal at West, and it's been five years now, I've never had priority hiring. It has always, hiring teachers in August is horrible. And when you need the best in front of your kids, you need help in getting that done early, so that you can succeed.
So do you have a teacher learning coach in each of your schools?
I do now.
A full-time?
Full-time, both schools. Not last year, but this year, you guys made that happen.
So it looks like, from what you are talking to the board at this point in time, you have the supports you need. What is it that you need from the board, so you can get out of this priority improvement or turnaround status, whatever you are in at both of these schools? So like what Superintendent Gall was talking, this is the last time we see you in this type of environment, and you don't have to come back here next time. What do you need, what supports do you need? And if you have the supports, then we got to hold you accountable for the results that you produce.
I believe I have the supports, and I definitely feel I can be held accountable. I'm the instructional leader of these two schools, and if they don't succeed, ultimately, that's on me. If I need something, I've been told to ask, and I will.
Okay. Well, that's all I wanted to hear, that you feel like you have the supports in place, so.
Yeah, I just want to be specific again to the supports, to remind folks, it's been several weeks since I showed that first brief. When we called Site Center Leadership, we put together a radial picture with the school, and the school one plan, the principal at the middle. And then we had three different turns of the dial, which was the high school combination lock. The schools you're seeing today are that third turn of the dial. So in a normal school to area superintendent relationship, area superintendent goes in and says, school X, things are going really well, your scores are strong, I was at the football game Friday night, way to go team, how can I help? And you help with one thing or two. In that second turn, you have a little bit more specific need. Maybe there's a technology issue, maybe you don't have strong math teachers, and you have eureka math rolling out, and you need a little bit more time. In that third level, is when you're at what I call priority improvement or turnaround. It is a complete all-around circumference of understanding the needs of the schools. And so you heard some things very specifically this evening already. You heard Marcy, who is the coach that reports to Brandon. That's Brandon's coach that goes around with him, to make sure that the work that's happening in the schools is being supported and consistent with the one plan. It's not that I don't believe that Karen can do it, I just know that the work in a turnaround school is often very confused to actually get to its one plan, because the needs of turnaround schools sometimes are much larger, just to get to instruction. And it might have been on a slide, and I might have missed it, but our comms team has prioritized the advertisement and the web development of our priority schools. Yes, every school deserves a quality webpage, but why not start with the school who's suffering the most? Because it's an additional duty of a teacher to be a webmaster, or another staff member. I want that support coming in from central office, because as you all know, usually the school with the lowest performance is the ones with the least experienced teachers, where the most vacancies, and the least qualified members to clean floors, and the latest buses, and all those things. The wraparound supports this year is how we decided to take the skills that we know that exist centrally, and lean them into schools. And so that's what I call the first free move. And so I'm glad to see that, Karen, you're feeling that specifically.
I would just add that what I really feel is, is that support that's coming with the leaning in. It's not somebody putting their thumb on us and saying, we're watching you, get it. It's how can we help you? And I feel like it's, it's a hand outreach to all of us. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you, too. And the one thing, couple of things that I do want to add, being a small school, what I've noticed is, like, when, especially at the elementary school level, when you have a small number of students, it's quick, there is, it is possible, and I have seen this happen over and over again, that a school which has turned around the priority improvement in a year its performance, because you are having a select few group of students, and you are able to move the needle much quicker than a high school, which has got like 800 or 1,000 or 1,500 students, which are under priority improvement. The number of students that you are targeting, you would be able to move them much quicker from priority improvement, provided that you have the right supports in place, and the right instructional leadership that is taking place through you. And that is something that should energize the school, that we don't need to go through five years to turn this around, you should be able to turn it around quicker than that.
I think that, like you said, in a small school, our closeness to the students allows us to have that more personal relationship with them, with their families, to move things faster. I think, I'll just mention, though, out there, one of the things with data is, in a small school, a couple of outliers can elevate your scores, or.
It may drop you, too. You are right. Okay.
So do you want to hear about Midland yet?
Sure.
Okay, let's go to Midland. Midland Mustangs, inspire others to be their best. That's what our kids chant every morning. So the data story at Midland, gosh, do I have a bright spot. But first of all, here's our setup for success, and you can see how we've moved our five essentials at Midland. We have gone from partially organized to organized. We haven't hit that three strong areas to be 10 times more likely to improve yet, but it's happening. Forty-three percent of the parents at Midland took the survey, so we got the ice cream, too. But we used it at spring reading night, and Director Ott came and had ice cream with us, and so did Director Jorgensen. It was great. So last year, when I stood in front of you, though, to talk about Midland, we were in turnaround, and we were stuck in turnaround. And I shared data that was good data, and something really exciting happened. The State Board of Education called us, and said, your data's really good. You're going to, if you're, you can participate in an expedited review process. And we did. And they changed our final SPF, in a year when no one was supposed to change, from turnaround to improvement. So Midland is currently not a turnaround school, we are now a school of improvement. I only wish that this year counted, because two years in a row gets you off the accountability clock. So we're a school of improvement, but we're still year one on the accountability clock, because it's not moving forward. Hopefully, two years in a, well, if they don't count this year because we didn't have enough data, will it count? Because it's not really two years in a row. I don't know. Hopefully. So we'll move to this year's data, our district benchmark data, to begin with, Galileo Growth, third through fifth grade. We have strong growth in ELA, and we have lost ground in math, just like at West. I'm going to go quickly, because you told me to go quickly. Early literacy is a bright spot at Midland. We set the same three goals that West did with CDE. At Midland, we're actually part of an early literacy grant, so we had a facilitator coming into the building, and supporting us with that, and we reached all three goals. Typically, they measure the goals K3, we measure ours K5. And as a school, we met the goals, over time, we have increased the number of students that are proficient or advanced. We did have two grade levels that made well above average progress, and one that made above average progress. But combining that all together as a school, we met our goal of moving students into proficiency. If I go to the CMAAS data for ELA, it's, you can see, it's very strong. From 2019 to 2021 to 2022, our percent of students meeting or exceeding expectations has really increased. The problem is, 29% is not enough for your kids proficient and advanced. So growth is great, but we know that our academic achievement has to catch up. So again, I looked at scale scores and said, how are we doing in comparison to the state? And this time, the gaps were reduced in all three grades. No, sorry, three and five for this school. No, three, four, and five. Sorry. Didn't even have that right in my paperwork, third through fifth. They all got closer to the state on scale score. Math, again, we have growth, in the number of our students meeting or exceeding expectations, I shouldn't use the word growth, because they're not the same kids, right? But 10% proficient and advanced in 2019, and 17% in 2022. Third grade, reduced the gap. Fourth grade, the gap went up by two, and fifth grade, the gap went down by 14. So mixed results across grade levels. Again, we have that insufficient data thing. Midland's even smaller than West, you asked about enrollment. At West, I'll tell you, Midland's at about 124. And again, I already told you, we're stuck at year one on the accountability clock, even though our rating on our performance framework moved from turnaround to improvement. We don't have that publicly reportable data. So I already talked a little bit about the fact that we have growth, but it's not enough, and we have achievement, but it's too low. And so we know we still have those performance challenges, they are school-wide. Our North Star, again, is our one plan. The really cool thing is that this year, in 2022, in May, when my schools did their one plans, I put them in the same room. Last year, I had one in one area and one in another, and I ran back and forth, and we wrote independent plans. This year, by putting both schools in the same room, I was able to listen, and listen, and hear what teachers had to say, hear what parents had to say, hear what the SAC people had to say, put all those ideas together. And in the end, they ended up talking to each other, and so we land on two one plans with the same major improvement strategies. So major improvement strategy one, again, is really based in quality PLCs. It's in teachers working together, and having that collective efficacy, and the belief that they can make things change. Our second major improvement, the action steps that we've started are the same, between the schools, because we wrote them that way. So we're on the mark for getting those, I'm trying to hurry up, it's hard, sorry, trying to move forward. I'll go to major improvement strategy two, again, family, school, and community partnerships. Action steps, again, are similar, we also have community partnerships with Dick's Sporting Goods, who've helped us out, and our Scholastic partnership happened there as well. Many of you probably saw our play Colorado Springs Day last year with the police department. That was a great community event, they came and played with our kids, and then gifted us a whole bunch of sporting equipment for the school. Our back-to-school barbecue at Midland was also very well-attended, our teachers there are also making the attendance calls. Our PBIS system there is in its second year. I restarted it last year, rebranded it, put everything in place, and 79 students is not correct. is not correct, it's forty-seven. Sorry, the slides got, didn't get changed from when I did it with Brandon till I fixed mine. But to be fair, it's not the same on that one. The progress monitoring pieces that we're putting in place are the same. I have a building leadership team that meets twice a month. We're doing ten-day data cycles. I guess one of the differences here is West is doing math and reading intervention. Midland doesn't have enough staff to add math intervention at this time. Small school, you can't have more people. We're gonna be doing the learning walks and walkthroughs. We're gonna use the same CDE rubric. In the end, I think what you'll see is our action steps will start to differentiate, because even though we're working together and we started in the same place, our schools will have different needs. And as we work with our SAC and in our community, I think some of those things will shape up differently. And you'll see that in our ONE Plan as it moves on through the year, because like I said, it's a living document. We get the same central supports. Sorry, I wasn't even going there. So, we have that wraparound support from district departments, from our area superintendent, from our area instructional coach, from the math folks. And really, the bottom line here is, together we can. And I really feel it coming from the district and I think my teachers really appreciate being valued and having that support coming into the schools. And hopefully, I'll have it for you in student outcomes and I can say that they're both off the clock next year.
Okay, thank you. Would you be able to share this presentation with the board? So, and also, in the future, if we can have Superintendent Call, the presentation that principals or administration is making, if the board can have it in advance so that we can follow along and we can do...
Sure, I'll take the hit. These were, we worked very hard this week to get these to a place where we felt that they were ready for a board presentation and we're working to meet those public demand timelines. And so, we'll continue to improve. But we wanted to be clear that it was better for you to not see them in advance and see them better than to see a lower-quality product in advance.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, it will happen here while we're sitting here.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any, Director Jorgensen?
Three quick questions for Midland. You mentioned the conferences as part of that engagement. What would be the frequency on that and how are you gonna measure the effectiveness of it?
Conferences...
With your community input for your students, you mentioned conferences, and so I just had a question here of when or how often student conferences are on their goals?
Well, we're doing ten-day data cycles. I think maybe that, is that where that came from?
Could be.
So, we're progress monitoring our kids constantly using Akadians. Our red kids get re-benchmarked every week and we make those changes to those groups. And again, that's school-wide by grade level, so that kids aren't pulled out of their academic classes or their specials for intervention.
Okay, cool. Number two, how many kids do you, you mentioned you had thirty-two kids on the REED plan and that moved to fifteen for last year. How many kids do you have on the REED plan this year?
It's in my email. But the kids that initially came out red, I'm gonna tell you, we had probably about thirty.
About thirty, okay, cool. So, a little bit of summer slide? Okay, and then...
Well, the kindergarten class counts and they're all new.
Yeah, sure, you gotta get them reading. Interesting, I know, being a small school, I wonder if we couldn't, with the wraparound support for Midland, having no math interventionist, but then seeing that your math score slid, to go, "Okay, what's that third wraparound support that we can do to go? Is it halftime at West, halftime at Midland? Or what's in their half FTE? We can pull to give you that math interventionist so that we don't, you know, so we can kind of just support those efforts, because you said, our math data slides, but then we don't have math interventions, even though we have...
I have to get creative, but you know, if you want to give me FTE, I don't have to be as creative. I mean, right now, I've got PE teachers and art teachers supporting math by pushing into classrooms. So, I mean, we're pulling out all the stops, because we know we have to do what's best for kids.
I love it. Just something that I saw, and I know you got Mr. Comfort there and good team, so maybe we can get you something.
Thank you.
Do you have something to add? Director Nelson?
I just want to say thank you. It's very clear you've put a lot of time and energy into this and I'm sure it's your team that has helped contribute and to all the schools. Just when I was reviewing what's on board docs, there's a lot of information here, so thank you all for the hard work you've put into these documents and thank you for presenting tonight and thanks for going a little faster on this one, just looking at the time and knowing we still have two more schools.
I was kinda wishing I could present them together. I was kinda wishing, you know, I have this, you know, I've talked to Dr. Comfort about some ideas around how we can bring this together more to benefit the kids, so maybe at some point he'll share that.
That'll be on us this year to do this work. Director Daniels, to your comment on what's happening on the West side, we have a lot of options. We might be confusing our own community on the number of options that we have. We have clear demand for what's happening in West Elementary and Midland. We have a strong leader that is splitting her time and bringing those two school communities closer together. And I know that Dr. Comfort has some ideas to bring as we get through capacity committee conversations this fall.
Thank you. We look forward to that recommendation that comes from you at that point in time. So, thank you, Principal Newton, for the report and to the board. I think in a couple of weeks, this comes as an action item, so in the meantime, you can look at the information that's on board docs. If you have more specific feedback that you want to provide, Ms. Newton, you can do so in the next week or so. Is that okay if the board provides that feedback on the use of...
Yeah, we'll take the feedback and then we'll supply it back and then we'll come back and...
Come back and, so if you can do it maybe in the next week, so they have time, about a week or so, that they can come back to the board on September twenty-eighth, when it comes as an action item. Yes, Director Nelson?
Just watching that accreditation meeting on Monday, they had a lot of great questions, some of similar that I had. And I know that there's already going to be passed on, so I'm not asking them tonight, but just that we would get those answers also. I don't know if it's gonna come in an email or if it will be that it's presented in the next accreditation meeting, so I'll just watch it if that's the case. But just that I do want to hear those answers too, that the team on Monday night had, so thanks.
I think, was it Natasha Kraus that was leading that thing? So, she may have, yeah, she's back there, up there. So, I didn't see you, so...
Sir Natasha just provided that feedback to Dr. Comfort and to myself, so we'll be working with the schools to work that in.
Okay, thank you. Moving on. Welcome, Principal Miller.
Hey.
It's late in the, late in the night, so...
It is getting a little late. We're good though, right?
Yes.
All right.
If you're good, we are good.
Superintendent Gold, President Malpackham, board, thank you for having me tonight. We're gonna wait until we're ready. Thank you. So, just like the previous presentations, we'll be sharing a bit about our data story before we start talking about our major improvement strategies and some of those action steps, in addition, what some of our goals are for this school year. As you'll see, excuse me, we're going fast to go faster this year. In the past, when we built our plan, we went slow to go fast and that time is over. And that's why our phrase in this year is, "We're going fast to go faster." So, our data story started, or excuse me, our data story starts with the five essentials overview. And you'll see that we have some growth opportunities when we are landing three out of the five areas in that yellow mark, which is neutral. Two of those areas are in orange, which is considered weak. When looking at, when breaking those down a little bit, our highest performance area came out as effective leaders, then ambitious instruction, collaborative teachers, supportive environment, and then involved parents. So, when looking at some of our district benchmarks, you'll notice that within last year, when we looked at our math, sixth through eighth grade, you'll see where our growth of our students were in each one of those grade levels. Now, as we talk as a staff, we kind of labeled as, if you look at, for example, in math, it was decreasing the trend. But when you see like sixth grade was at forty-three percent growth from the beginning of the year to the end, we say things like forty-three percent of our students hit their expected growth target from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. And so, you can use that same phrasing for our seventh graders, eighth graders. In English Language Arts, you'll see that we did increase and we did hit our overall benchmarks in all three grade levels of students' growth areas. Looking at our CMAS test scores from last year, you'll notice that it's broken down into two slides. You'll look on the top and that's our English Language Arts. And you look at our subcategories as well, you'll notice that we did not meet those areas as far as achievement. On the bottom part of that slide, within the English Language Arts and those subcategories, we too did not meet the expectations through the Colorado Department of Education. Similar slides for CMAS. When you look at mathematics, you'll notice that we did not hit those achievement marks. And in math, when you look at those subcategories, you'll see that we are starting to approach some areas. Something that we've talked about a lot is, we cannot be a school of achievement without being a school of growth first. And so, we're really targeting that growth aspect of our school, knowing that that's gonna come before we meet our next phases of this. So, we have three real priority challenges. You'll notice that the first one is gonna be connected with our major improvement strategy, number one. Our second one will be connected to our MIS two and the last one will be MIS three. But knowing that it's a ONE Plan, they're all blended together. They all, they all support each other. So, our first one, our most significant challenge is low test scores on both district, especially in those district measures. The challenges we really face are chronic absenteeism, student behaviors and the challenges they have. And then also, students are telling us through some of those surveys, their feedback about what they feel about being at school. Chronic absenteeism around MIS number two. Fifty-seven percent of our students were identified as chronically absent for the last school year. They cannot perform. They cannot achieve. They cannot engage with the work if they don't come to school. It's a poor self-efficacy. I cannot feel good about being at school if I'm not there often enough. I cannot feel good enough about taking tests if I am not there enough. So, we want to understand how school behavior impacts, the students and their attendance rates impacts their overall achievement. And lastly, and this is a combination of the first two, you'll notice that both, as we saw in our data dig, that you saw that both in our district assessments and state that we are not reaching the mark. So, what is the plan? This year's plan already starts being different, because when we talk about best-first instruction, we first had to address our master schedule. So, in all three of these major improvement strategies, you'll notice, we are much more calibrated, aligned, and deliberate with MIS number one around best-first instruction, MIS two around MTSS, and MIS three around PLCs. I say that because prior to this year, our master schedule did not support our teams being able to meet at the grade level or at the grade level or within grade-level departments. And this was the first year that our master schedule supported those action steps and it supports those other MISs as well. So, Galileo needs an identity. And identity is AVID. And AVID does, it's designed to close the achievement gap based on a number of factors. And we use WICER, which is an acronym, which stands for Writing, Inquiry, Collaboration, Organization, and Reading. And when we look at best-first instruction, we look at three categories. We look at planning for learning, engagement, and high-quality questioning. And unpacking how WICER addresses each one of those is important to a school like ours. What I'd like is to kind of, well, let me go, yeah, I'll just keep going. So, what are we doing to address those AVID and those instructional learning strategies in the classroom? Well, we provide monthly onsite professional development led by our AVID school site team. We've spread AVID school-wide, which was one of our visions of Galileo years ago, and still, the attempts to implement were stopped or paused, but this year, it's fully implemented. We create and implement the AVID discovery class, which is in terms of, almost like a discovery light, or excuse me, an AVID light class. So, we have the elective class, which is students have to apply to be in. And then you have the AVID light class or the AVID discovery class, which helps students learn some of these WICER strategies, these best-first instruction skills. And then it's also a pipeline for our AVID elective class. Lastly, we increase the number of AVID elective classes in all grade levels with the application process. So, let me give you some numbers on this. So, in previous years, we had three AVID elective classes. We had one for sixth grade, one for seventh grade, and one for eighth grade. So, that really connected with fourteen percent of our student population. You can't be called an AVID school if you only have fourteen percent of the students engaged with it. So, with our master schedule, we now have three AVID classes in eighth grade, three AVID class, three AVID, excuse me, elective classes in seventh grade and two in sixth grade. So, now we have forty-two percent of our students in those AVID elective classes. And remind you, they had to apply to get into the elective classes. So, the students were telling us they wanted to be in AVID. We just didn't have the capacity at the time. And so, our AVID department, help, or excuse me, our built AVID department helped us design how we were going to then bring in these students and have them have an option of being in these AVID elective classes. What's nice too is, those other, what is the numbers, forty-eight percent are now in that AVID discovery class. And again, like I said, it's that pipeline of getting students in. In addition, we now have a full-time AVID site coordinator who helps us build that professional development, who incubates this currently first month of school in those AVID elective classes, supporting those teachers in those classes. But now, since we've had that first month to really incubate, coach, support students on their organizational tools, now she's gonna start pushing out into the rest of the building. Her name's Brandy Hall. She's a former AVID student herself. And so, she's the perfect person to lead that department, which is now, instead of three, it's now four individuals on school site. In addition to that, she is the one who really delivers those WICER strategies and supports classroom teachers, so that they can then address grade-level standards in the classroom. And that's an important point. We cannot be off-grade level anymore as a school. We have to get students connected to the state standards at those grade levels and her support and guidance in that has done a lot for us. One last thing I'll add to this is, because of our push towards AVID, looking at the five essentials, when we talk about program cohesiveness, one of our strongest strength areas was in program cohesiveness. So, sixty-nine percent, which is one of our strongest measures. Second, is we now have our MTSS, multi-tier systems of support in place, but unlike last previous years, with our master schedule being designed the way it is, we now have two MTSS meetings a week. The one that's, the one that's on Monday is only attendance-related. And as you saw with the numbers of chronic absenteeism, we can't avoid it. It has to be a priority for us. So, what it would look like if you went to that meeting, Ms. Van Bendon, who oversees that work, you would see our teachers go into that meeting. We would identify students who are potentially already getting on the mark for losing, or excuse me, exceeding that ten percent of chronic absenteeism. So, we sit down as a team, we start talking about who are the students of concern, and then we ask our teams, "Who's going to call those families?" And once we make those calls, those staff members, and we ask those questions that Ms. Newton asked as well by the teachers. "How are you doing? Did you know your student wasn't here in... wasn't here in the building? We miss your student being here. Is there something going on that we can help with or support with? Once the teacher gets that information, they put it into Microsoft Forms, and they send it back to our attendance response team. And so now we have the data. We have the understanding from the family of what it is that their team, or what is it their family needs, if there is a way for us to respond. In addition to that, you'll see the early warning indicators. So MTSS is more formally connected to three areas, the ABCs. So you're talking about attendance, behavior, or course performance. So on a separate day than Mondays, the team then comes back from MTSS to talk about behaviors and course performance for students. And really, what we're trying to do is, with the early warning indicators, is capturing those students before they have to go into the MTSS process. And we want to stop before they get started. And so with our team, in those early warning indicators, it helps us to be able to identify who's going to be a champion, who in our team is going to check in with students, who's going to provide counseling supports, how are we going to break down instruction for students so that they can be successful, how are we modeling those expectations for students and those skills, and what are those lagging areas that we want to address for those students before they become larger issues? The EWI process is more of a short-term first stop in the process of a student who's going to fall behind, whereas MTS is more of a long-range support. In our major improvement strategy, number three, much like MTSS, we now don't have it once a week. We've doubled that. So now we have it two times a week. The first, excuse me, professional learning community we have on Tuesdays is bringing back our common formative assessments on a bi-weekly cycle. And we look at the data from that. In addition, when looking at that data, we're asking ourselves those questions around PLC questions three and four. And those questions really revolve around what students have obtained the new learning, and the students who haven't, what are we doing about it? And those are really some of those more in-depth conversations we want to ask of our teams. So some of those action steps within PLCs, the second PLC is more so of our blueprints. So building those blueprints, connecting with the six phases of learning, which goes back to best-first instruction, which goes back to our WICER strategies. So when we looked at the six phases of learning, we asked ourselves, what WICER strategies are in phase one? What WICER strategies are in phase two? And we wanted to blend that learning for our staff. So they didn't feel like this was in addition to, that this wasn't something else, that these are already best practices during the classroom. We just want to label it and have a common language for what we're doing in the building. So we ensure that the interventions are happening. We ensure that they're regularly monitored and grown into. So what are we going to do? How do we monitor this? And how do we really progress monitor this as a team? So when we look at, so when looking at PLC work, we're going to monitor through the blueprints. We're going to monitor through the data that we collect on students, identifying what, how do we identify the standard they're looking at? How do we then put it into student-friendly terms, then identify the best assessment tool possible? And once we identify that, then we can go into questions three and four. So that's one piece of it. As far as AVID goes, we do have a walkthrough form. And through that walkthrough form, we are able to calibrate what instructional strategies we're observing through the best-first instruction. And then we also have our administration team going in and coaching alongside teachers as well. As far as MTSS goes, we look at how many students have moved through our early warning indicators in a fast pace. So that should be an eight-to-ten-week process that we monitor every two weeks. Whereas those students who have really been identified needing long-range supports, those ones we support semester-wise, even year-long. And we use those as our ways of monitoring and progressing our work as well. In addition to that, we use common formative assessments, and we use those on a bi-weekly basis, as I shared. I think what I'd said, some of the central supports, obviously Ms. Kalback and I have been working diligently about working with the Colorado Department of Education and the Turnaround Network. I know we have a soon-to-be a visit up in Denver, looking at a school that has done this work successfully, with an administrator that has started that process, has moved to school, and where they're at now, and what are those nuances? What does it take in order to really push a school and move it? I need that coaching. I need to see what it looks like somewhere else as well. And having that opportunity with Andy Swanson, yeah, that's really going to help us. Janetta Knight also supports us. She's our Southeast Area Regional Coach, and she comes in and helps us, supports us with our PLC work as well, in addition.
Sure. So when Ken and I meet weekly, we walk classrooms every week. That classroom walk includes both a debrief on what we both saw in that classroom and a planning for how Ken will give feedback to that teacher. We've actually moved that into how he will practice a particular classroom management strategy or instructional technique with the teacher in the classroom on a very tight turnaround cycle, so we make sure that we improve. Ken mentioned most of the pieces that we've engaged in together in terms of support, but I wanted to go one step deeper on that partnership with the CDE Network. Ken and his team will be participating this month in a professional development around the observation feedback cycle, and in October on a weekly data meeting cycle, both of which fit nicely with pieces that he's already put into his system and that CDE and through our partnership with them will help to develop even further.
Thank you.
I'm glad the bankers was quick to push the button, so.
I would. With a fifty-seven percent absentee rate, and having experienced that in my own teaching, how is it that you or your team has modified or adapted? And what you said at the very beginning, you can't teach me if they're not there. So I didn't hear how it is that you're going to meet that challenge, because it's huge.
So a couple pieces of it. It's not one single, it's not one single initiative that's going to stop that. When we first started looking at attendance, we had to ask ourselves, what is our process for students who are absent, and what are we doing about it? And once we broke down the list of how we go about it, like, we send a letter home, right? We send a letter home, like, saying, hey, your child's absent. It gives the parents on that letter the idea of how many absences they have. There is no human contact in that. Not only that, but like, the student wasn't involved. And the student should be involved with every single aspect of that absence and when they've been absent. So we had to reevaluate how we even go about approaching attendance. In addition to that, and this is something that I think was valuable at the time when we did this, and it was questionable, but we pulled in all the students within the first month of school that had already been identified as chronically absent, over ten percent of the school year. Counselors weren't pleased by this. They felt like we were breaching trust with the students. But we asked, and we said, listen, it's not about being in trouble. It's not anything like that. We're just going to come around and ask you, why have you been absent from school? And we had a large pocket of students already. The students were very comfortable sharing with us why they've been absent. They weren't trying to hide it. They knew why they were in the room. When we started putting buckets together of students who were absent because of sickness, vacations, taking care of siblings, lack of transportation, those types of common absences, we found out that we could have made a difference in fifty-four percent of those cases. So that was, now, it's not to say we did, but it was a huge awakening for us, and that really launched us into our attendance response team. And so for us to have a team of administrator, counselors, social workers, that's where the work that we really started going down. And then calling families and asking them, what is it you need in order to get your child here to school every day? It's not to say that it's foolproof, but we at Galileo had to have that attendance response team that meets every week. So this past week, our teachers were calling, and they were reporting their findings. Within the next week or two, our attendance response team convenes, start looking at the biggest concerned students. And not only, it's not always the biggest fish student that we're always trying to go after first. Our team wants some victories, too, right? So we want some students that we know that we can make an impact on. Something else, and I know this is something that some of the board members were aware of in the past, we started our back-to-school telethon. That's something that has had an impact. We've also done our twenty-day launch, where every day, just having students in the building, we celebrate them being there. We do that after winter break as well. And so those are just some of the big pieces. We, first days back, giving prizes. So, yeah.
Well, that answers my second question. But my first question is, I'm the teacher in the classroom. Half my class is missing. What strategies have you guys developed in order to be able to teach the curriculum and at the same time acknowledge the fact that the kids, some of your kids, too many of your kids, weren't there Monday and Tuesday? Or they were there Monday and Tuesday, they're not there Thursday and Friday? You can't just keep teaching to the standard or the curriculum. There's got to be, in my view, there has to be some sort of an adjustment that says, I need to be able to meet your need, and you don't have the foundation, because I taught that Monday, and you weren't here. And now this is Wednesday, and I'm over here, but you're still back on Friday. So how are you and your team, your teachers, looking at that and coming up with ways to meet those needs?
I agree with you. Is I can't, on Wednesday, when a student's been gone Monday, and I have different students showing up each day, that's part of the challenge. I think that's something that me and Ms. Kalback will, as we talk about wraparound services, I think that's something that we can brainstorm further about. But I could agree with you.
And I'm trying to help.
I know you are.
I think so. I think that part of your intervention strategies might be to make some accommodation for kids who have the, and like you said, we all like success stories. So maybe starting with kids who have the potential for accepting that support and finding that, gee, if they'd made that extra effort, they would have come that day. But something, we can't ignore it. And so there's got to be some sort of an intervention, some sort of a opportunity for other staff members to dive in to be able to support on a consistent basis. Thank you.
Thank you. So that fifty-seven percent chronic absenteeism data was for last year, if I remember.
Correct.
So what does your first three weeks now indicate? Do you indicate a trend where these students are still not showing up?
We, it's not the same student, but so right now, our daily attendance rate is, between all three grade levels, is within one percentage of each other at eighty-nine percent, which is below what we would hope for at that ninety-five percent. So where are we still having concerns, issues? Yeah, this isn't going to go away. This is not a problem that's going to go away. It has been there since the moment I walked in the door.
How long have you been there?
Five years.
Right.
Yeah. And in the first year, I was, it wasn't for a lack of desire that we didn't do more to address it. And that was not the case. But it is a struggle based off of what the needs are of individual students. We cannot collectively, but like I said, those buckets. And they change constantly what those buckets are.
Although I don't think we'll solve the problem tonight, I do want to add that we have identified in our weekly data review of attendance that we have great challenges in attendance in certain schools. It really starts to show itself in Middle and High School. We have asked internally our engaged community, Luanne's work, to bucket all our community partners and see who are the community partners that can help us engage with our student communities in ways that sometimes we either run out of ideas or time, being the most critical resource at the staff level. And so you heard Karen Newton talk about her teachers will pick up the phone. It's a much smaller community of which she, by definition, is more connected to Director Daniels's comments about the West Side. We need to be expanding our own solutions in how it is that we're interacting with our community when it comes to attendance and chronic absenteeism.
And that is the purpose of those Monday phone calls home by staff members, is to try to triage them from the very beginning, like, where are we at? What is going on? We don't have a large percentage of our families who call in to excuse absences. So they do go down as unexcused.
I was mentioned in the DAC accreditation meeting that your goal, and I haven't looked at your report completely, but your goal was to reduce chronic absenteeism from fifty to forty percent this year. If that's the goal, then it's not going to get our students where they need to.
It's not, but you're, I agree.
Director Nelson.
So I was wondering, it sounds like with your buckets, it's more that there's barriers, transportation, that kind of thing. Do you sense that it's also a desire of the kids being there? That there's just, they don't want to go? And so how do we address that? How do we get the kids to want to be in school? And so that got me thinking about your extracurriculars or relationships, you know, that kind of thing, if you could speak to that a little.
And I agree. When we talk about best-first instruction and engagement, how are we engaging our students so that they feel like their learning is valued? And I believe it starts there. And additionally, it starts with, who is the staff member that can champion for that student? That when that student doesn't show up, and they possibly could have, that they're going to feel it with that staff member, who's going to be like, I missed you. I wish you were here. Like, my day wasn't as good because you weren't here, right? And it really does start, it's not about the student shows up five minutes late. It's not about ten minutes late. It's like, I'm just glad you're here today. Like, we are going to embrace you and bring you into the classroom. We're going to get you caught up. We're going to get you started. We have a certain percentage of students who, if they're going to be late for one reason or another, dropping off siblings, wherever the case is, they're going to stop coming to school because they may not feel welcomed. I would like to think, as many of you have been in the building, that is a welcoming environment. But I would like to think it's welcoming not only for adults but for students as well.
So would you say that there is a little bit of just a lack of desire of going to school, or is it more of that it's, there's barriers?
They didn't say, the students weren't sharing, like, I just don't want to go to school. If they really didn't want to go to school, they wouldn't. They're coming. They're just not coming at the frequency that we want them to. Yeah. I think middle schoolers, it's a unique age, because unlike high school, where they drop out, if they just stop going, they know it. Middle schoolers, I hope nobody's watching, none of the kids at Galileo are watching this, but there's still the illusion that they're going to school, just not at the rates that we would hope for.
Yeah. I want to interject, just a couple of trends we've seen across middle schools, because this is the only middle school presentation we'll have this evening. When I arrived in July, most of the stress in the system felt as if it was around middle schools. I interviewed and commented on low enrollment and low utilization rate for middle schools, not a clarity of message of how they fit into AMP, where they were, how do you choice, what is choice, where does a pathway start and stop. What we're seeing right now for enrollment in middle schools is there's a bubble of matriculation staying in the system from fifth to sixth grade. And now what we think is really happening is not that parents are choosing our middle schools, they're just not not choosing our middle schools. And so we are seeing demand signal in schools that have not traditionally been known for performance or an identity. And the reason I want to start with that comment is Galileo has identified itself as an avid middle school. But Galileo doesn't have a formal relationship with the two of our avid elementary schools, nor are they conveniently aligned to be there. I am pressing, Ken, to understand if Galileo's identity is avid. When you go to Jackson and you go to Edison, the two elementary schools that have adopted AVID, you clearly feel avid when you walk in the building. I'm not sure we're there yet at Galileo. We pulled the attendance data, and although it was just a short period of time, for the kids that were most involved with AVID, and it wasn't better than the average attendance data. It was actually worse. And so if your identity is this, but it doesn't attract people to come more, then you might have to ask yourself if this is really that. And so we're doing that analysis. And so I appreciate Ken being transparent and leading with the challenges he's having with chronic absenteeism, and to the commentary at the board that best-first instruction all day long is great for the fifty-three percent of the kids that are in the classroom. We will continue to raise that bar and hold ourselves to that standard, but we won't get the school out of turnaround until we can get the forty-seven percent of chronic absenteeism down to single digits. It's not a down to twenty or thirty percent. It's got to be that. And so And so we'll work offline with Sheri and with Ken to come up with specific plans and we'll come back to the board with what we're doing about the absenteeism to make sure that we're able to have the larger strategy of the district, uh, be realized.
And if, uh, just to add on, and if avid is the plan going forth for them?
That was actually one of my comments that when I toured the school, which I very much enjoyed my visit there. Um, you know, it has the painting math and sciences on the outside of the building. And I asked, are you doing that? And you said, not really.
Very honest with you.
Yeah, and I appreciate the honesty. And so we as a district need to take a hard look at what are we promoting or what that, to the community, they think it's one thing and they get in and it's not really that anymore. So we need to take a hard look at Galileo itself and what kind of a school it is and what we're gonna do with it. So that's just a segue, uh, side thought. Um, back to avid. So I also had Odyssey on my list of schools to tour and they have avid as a part of their program. It was kind of in agreement with the colleges that if we're gonna take students that are younger in to our, our college classes, then there needs to be some kind of a program to help them have that maturity for organization. And avid is what they're using Odyssey also. So, um, I spoke a little bit with that teacher and he actually kind of tweaked the avid program. You know, it has kind of a detailed plan throughout the year of what it should look like. And he realized there are some things in spring that actually would be more beneficial to bring in in the fall. So just if, wondering if, do we have that collaboration with the schools that are doing avid? The elementary schools, you, Odyssey and kinda learning from each other and like, hey, this is working really well or we dropped that, you know, kinda thing. So just would encourage that.
Absolutely. And Sarah Miller was really someone who, her and her team came over to Galileo as we were exploring different options of building an identity outside of a school of math and science. And as she presented to our team, uh, after we had already asked our community, what are you looking for a student who's ready for ninth grade coming out of Galileo? Um, we asked our students, we asked our staff, and that's how we, avid was already in there, but it was a program out of many programs. We can't do 10 things well. It's just not how, that's why this one plan is the way it is. It's just a couple of things to really dial in on and get good at. Um, but I, yes, I agree with you and I'm happy to reach out to Sean some more and talk with him further, but I, cause he's such a great resource.
Yeah. Um, the absenteeism, is it that they're gone the whole day? Or is it they miss like a class or two throughout the day? Cause I think at middle school that could start to happen as well, right?
It's, it's the, usually the whole day.
Okay.
Yeah. What we're also getting is, uh, quite a few parents who are asking for requests of excused absences for things that board policy wouldn't say that they'd be excused for. So that also, and that's come up just recently. So that is a challenging conversation for a family who has some type of event that they had planned during the school year. And to call them and let them know, hey, listen, you know, obviously, I don't know if we can, can like, do a whole lot to stop you leaving, but at the same time, we can't excuse these absences. Your child needs to be in school during these times. And, but those are, those are person-to-person conversations and understanding that we're not fighting these families or saying no. We just can't support them being absent during the school year, considering the place that Galileo's at.
Well, thank you. I know you guys are working really hard there, so just let us know how we can help.
For sure. Thank you.
Director Ott.
Thank you. I appreciate, uh, Director Bankus' line of questioning about attendance because that's, as I read the UIP, I felt like it wasn't addressed as clearly as say your presentation tonight was. I just felt like, you know, the rebooting and refining the attendance process and all of that. It, it, it didn't feel like there's a whole lot behind that information for us as the lay reader, if you will. And I realize we are not the intended audience necessarily. But one thing that, one of my takeaways, teachers would be making phone calls to the families of students who are absent three times in their class. And I just felt like if, if you haven't called me, if you haven't missed me after the first time, then why would I care by the third? You're like, I'm outta here. So I appreciate that some of, at the elementary level, they, they have a different ratio. But my comment there would be three times is a lot. And there was a reference to a contract and I could not find that on your website. So I wondered what that was.
That would go through, yeah, the contract would go through the attendance response team, right? We would build those individually with students in those contracts.
Okay. And if they do them, are there supports built in? It sounded like there might be. I, that wasn't my takeaway from the improvement plan. But are there supports for a student who could be missing, you know, have reasons for two of those buckets and one of them is, is the family vacation, it's transportation? Okay. Sorry kid. Now we know why you're not coming, but we're not going to assist you with the fact that your family doesn't have a car. Or, I mean.
Yeah.
You must have a plan there.
Some of that, some of that does revolve around transportation boundaries, right? And that's the case. Um, but some of those contracts around incentivizing students to, so what, in some of those buckets, it's more so around incentivizing students who, we're not finding that there's anything besides their own potential motivation to come to school on a regular base, or on a consistent basis. So those contracts sometimes are incentivized, right? So we're like, what is your, um, for lack of a better word, like what is your, as, as Ms. Butcher said earlier, what's your love language? Like what is it that gets you here? And, um, doing some type of choice activity with them, sometimes the students don't even know what gets them to school. We've had that happen. We're like, I don't know. So we ask them like, and I'm not saying this is right, but you know, is it, is it time with your friends? Is it, uh, food choices? Uh, other things like we buy, we buy meals for kids who come to school after so many days in a row. We'll buy, you know, all those things happen and they're live in the building all the time. Um, but yeah, a lot of it, and it's not about being punitive or consequencing students for whatever the case. That just defeats the purpose. We're just trying to find their language of getting them to school. Sometimes that's not always present to us at the very beginning. But as we get to know the students better and as we talk to teachers about learning about the students, sometimes that unpacks itself for us as well.
So I wanna jump in just in honor of time. It's clear that we have a little bit more to do on addressing the attendance issue at Galileo in order to be able to get to where we wanna get to. So we'll take this offline, we'll come back. If there are other comments about the UIP, I invite the board to make them. But, uh, we've got the dead horse on the chronic absenteeism and that's on us to come back and fix it. This is not, uh, our first year with this leadership team at Galileo. We need to resolve this in order to come off the list. If we went all the way back through the data, the leading information does not say we're on a path. Uh, and we're digging in very specifically to say that we don't even have the kids in the building. And so we don't have the confidence in the trust indicators and five essential. We don't have the kids showing up. That's on us to come back with a better plan to be sure that we can get there.
I do wanna add one more thing. Um, and I appreciate the last couple of years have been hard and that the, as noted earlier, the in and out certainly isn't gonna help your population there, or any school population have regular attendance. One of the things I did after looking at all of the schools, um, reading, reading their UIPs and their focus and everything, um, I went and looked at your websites. And I think this may be true of all of our websites because I didn't, but I didn't look at them all. I have a real problem when I look at the website and there's, there is outdated material. I'm not convinced why I would wanna send my kid to some of these schools. And there isn't information about what's interesting, what's different. And at Galileo, so thank you for this, you do list your clubs and of course you have the advantage of the school garden there. But please just add some things that would make me go, dang, that school looks interesting. And I know West has a video. Um, Midland has information on family and community opportunities to volunteer. It has a little link somewhere in there for the kiosk. And if I'm a community member and I wanna spend some time in a school or I'm a parent looking for the difference between Midland, Howard, West, um, I, I can tell you what I'm gonna choose and it's the one that's telling me what's exciting about that school. And that's true at the high school level too. If I'm not interested in JRO, JROTC, I'm not going to Mitchell. Because there's, there's no clubs listed. There's just, yeah. So that's, that's a comment for everybody. And I, I also will add that if a military family is coming to this town, there's, other than the JRO, JROTC program, they're not gonna pick our schools based on our websites. So, but again, thank you for the, I, I don't wanna be all down on you. Thank you for the clubs being there and I know you have great things that are happening. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that feedback, Director Ott. Director Oma.
Okay, it's getting late and I didn't take out my vitamins, so somebody help me with my memory. Um, Galileo became Galileo, what, 2010, 11? Nine? It used to be East, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So I stay, okay. And I remember when they changed the name of Math and Science, I said, well, are we gonna focus on Math and Science? And that never really happened. They were trying to get an identity like you're doing now. Um, first of all, and I commend you, I think being a, uh, a middle school principal, although all principals have their challenges, middle school, whoa. So you're bringing back a lot of, um, memories. One reason I started, I started a private school because my daughter came back from, I won't mention a D11 middle school for the sake of keeping, but, um, she told me this. I don't wanna go to that school no more because all they, all the girls talk about is sex and drugs. Middle school. And you, you know that's happening. Okay, it happens, maybe not open, but I go, whoa. So that caused me to start a school. And that's part, a lot of the challenges you're facing with the 57% that they're not coming. So the, my, I'm, I'm thinking and I go, who's feeding you?
We have, we have multiple feeder schools.
Right. And so then, if they're, we have to, cause it's not, you're, you're, it's like when I see it, the middle schools get, and I use in this term loosely in a derogatory way, they get dumped certain students. And now you have to deal with what, what had taken place the first five years. And, and I, it seems to me that that's kind of evident in, in that area of town because it's been a constant problem since I've been around D11, that's 2009. So I, I think some of the root issues gotta go, it's beyond what you're doing. It, it's before what you're doing. And, and if I walk into your school, would I see there's a focus on attendance? In other words, would I know there's attendance? Would I see a focus? You know, when you write things on the wall and you write them everywhere, all of a sudden it became, it becomes a focal point where every teacher begins to even think about. Then you're bringing a different spirit to your school. That that's, that's important. So if I walk into your school, what I say are, are the people, is this school concerned about attendance? Would I know that? Probably not, because nobody wants to talk about it.
I wanna talk about it.
Well, but you, but you know what I'm saying? If I walk into the school without you telling me, would I know? That that's a focus.
Sure.
And see, and I think that's gotta be part of the focus. That's what I would do. And, and then, then I, then I'd work with my feeder schools and say, hey man, you guys gotta give me some help over here. Because that, you're getting their product and now you have to fix it. And that's a tough gig and it's not on you. And I commend you for, for, for your, I can just tell you, your, your demeanor, your, your, your desire to do the best thing is evident. But I, I, and I also feel bad for you because like you're taking the hit.
Yeah, but I chose to be here.
But you know what I mean?
This, this was, if I'm at a Galley, I'm a school exactly like it.
Right.
This is, this is the community I was meant to work with.
Right.
Oh, it's been my entire career like that.
You gotta do it, but it's a tough gig. And I just wanna, I just wanna encourage you that I'm not looking, I don't think any of us here are looking at you in any, any, even though the scores are pretty bad, we're not looking at you. We, we, I commend you for taking it.
Yeah, you know that I was gonna, I knew what was gonna happen when those slides came up. This was not, I was gonna, I'm gonna bypass.
Just a couple of comments on, on the feeder work. You know, we are still a system that is, um, underpopulated by capacity and buildings. And we are in a state of that, um, supports and celebrates choice. This is the first year, we are two months into a restructure where we have brought in some semblance of a cluster. Um, and I wanna call, uh, out specifically the work that Sheri is leading in the Southeast. As you will hear when Mitchell comes forward, she had elementary principals attend Mitchell High School's open house. Now there, we will remain a system and a state of choice. I don't foresee that changing. But the idea of creating a pre-K to 12 vertical continuum is such that Penrose Elementary School should be seeing themselves as producing future marauders. Now I do not disagree that Director Ott, if exercising choice says she chooses to not go to Mitchell. But what we should not do be is communicating to neighborhood schools where there are natural relationships that you should automatically be forced to choose all the time. There are direct connections, some of them are easier. It is very easy to make direct connections in the northeast part of town. The infrastructure exists, the neighborhood exists. If you go to Jenkins, you really think you're going to Dority. It just makes a lot of sense. You will hear from Principal George Smith here momentarily, who is only two and a half miles away from Dority High School. And it is a straight shot down the road. And when we were at the, uh, the tailgate, I had people tell me about the boundary lines between Dority and Mitchell and how that used to be the biggest rivalry within the city was those two schools. That rivalry no longer exists. Now I'm sure it does on the fields of friendly strife, but the community has said, we believe in Dority and we do not believe in Mitchell. So as we make these very hard discussions and decisions, we always have to have in the back of our brain, will we build up to that 100% capacity? Or do we want to be 75% utilization? So I just think it's important that when we're not sure if the community understands what Galileo is and we're on our third or fourth try at trying to say it, then maybe we have to ask ourselves, what is the future of Galileo?
Six students out of, uh, 133 that took the STAR Renaissance assessment at the beginning of the year, six out of 133 were proficient.
In, in sixth, seventh and eighth grade?
Our sixth graders.
Sixth graders.
Um, no, s- six students, not percentages.
Yeah.
Six students came in proficient.
Out of 133.
133.
Yeah. That's.
And I, and I know the hard work that's going on in our feeder schools. I've been in all of them. So the fight, it's the fight, you know? It's what our teachers are doing daily. We do, we celebrate who is there and not say we don't ignore who's not. But it is about, we gotta, really, we, we celebrate who shows up every day.
Thank you.
All right.
Appreciate what you're doing. Okay. Welcome. It's 10 o'clock, so. You've been waiting here for four and a half hours to come and talk to us.
Good information.
Yeah. Well.
All right. Good evening. Uh, I would like to begin by sharing a bit of information about our mission and vision at Mitchell High School. Mitchell High School has adopted the District 11 mission to intentionally align and guide our work. At Mitchell, we dare to empower the whole student to profoundly impact our world. During the 2021-22 school year, the Mitchell staff in partnership with Transformation Systems engaged in collaborative culture, design, work intended to shift our culture and climate to reflect high achievement, expectations, accountability and integrity. As a result of that collaborative effort, the staff developed and adopted our school vision. Our school vision is to operate in a culture that builds, maintains and restores trust as defined by sincerity, competence, reliability and care to offer a first-class school to our community that prepares all students for post-secondary readiness, college and career. At this time, I would like to highlight a few data points that came as a result of stakeholder efforts during the 21-22 school year. Specific to five essentials perception data, Mitchell High School obtained all stakeholder reports, student, parent and teacher due to adequate survey participation. On the right slide, right side of this slide, you can see that Mitchell High School response rates compared to D11 response rates. Effective leaders and teacher principal trust are trending up. Keeping in mind that the cut point for a strong rating is a score of 60. In 2022, the effective leaders rating received a rating of 51 and teacher principal trust received a rating of 54. Teacher perception of quality professional development and collaborative practices is strong with ratings of 78 and 61 respectively. According to University of Chicago Five Essential Survey data, schools at or above benchmark on three or more essentials are 10 times more likely to improve than schools that are below benchmark. Based upon this tool, Mitchell High School is seeing high performance and improvement. Based upon this tool, Mitchell High School is seeing high performance and improvement in areas of collaborative practices, quality, professional development, teacher-principal trust, math instruction, program coherence, and instructional leadership. Key Five Essential growth opportunities fall within the measures of supportive environment, involve families, collaborative teachers, and ambitious instruction. Overall, in twenty twenty-two, Mitchell High School is a partially organized for improvement school. I would now like to transition and share assessment data from the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Last year, Mitchell High School participated in three rounds of district benchmark assessments. Over the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year, forty-three percent of ninth, tenth, and eleventh grade students met expected growth in reading with a participation rate of eighty-eight percent. Over a, over the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year, thirty-one percent of ninth, tenth, and eleventh grade students met expected growth in math with a participant, participation rate of eighty-four percent. The preliminary Scholastic Aptitude Test, or PSAT, assessment resulted in ninth-grade students demonstrating a pass rate of thirty-two percent in evidence-based reading and writing, referred to as EBRW, and a pass rate of nine percent in math with a participation rate of eighty-five percent. Tenth-grade students demonstrated a pass rate of thirty-four percent in evidence-based reading and writing and a pass rate of eleven percent in math with a participation rate of eighty-eight percent. The SAT assessment resulted in eleventh-grade students demonstrating a pass rate of twenty-five percent in evidence-based reading and writing and a pass rate of nine percent in math with a participation rate of ninety-two point six. Keep in mind that pass rate correlates to academic achievement and is reflected on the Colorado Department of Education School Performance Frameworks, or referred to as SPF's. Preliminary SPF indicates that tested students are performing below the fifteenth percentile for academic achievement on the PSAT for both evidence-based reading and writing. That's at a thirty-nine, three hundred and ninety-eight point nine level there. And then math is at three seventy-two point seven. Our intention is to improve and enter into the approaching range, or fifteenth percentile or better, in twenty-two, twenty-three. Preliminary SPF indicates that tested students' median growth percentile does not meet expectation for academic growth on PSAT and SAT for math, which is at thirty-three percent. Our intention is to improve and enter into the approaching range, thirty-five to fifty, or better, in twenty-two, twenty-three. Preliminary SPF indicates that tested students' median growth percentile is approaching expectation for academic growth on the PSAT and SAT for evidence-based reading and writing. So we got a score of forty. Our intention is to prove in the approaching range, which again is thirty-five to fifty, or increase to a better rating in twenty-two, twenty-three. In accordance with D eleven guidance, Mitchell High School engages, engages in the continuous improvement process to address achievement and growth gaps as well as attain expected outcomes. During the twenty twenty-two D eleven district symposium, the improvement planning team analyzed site-level attendance and behavior data, demographic data, state assessment data, school turnaround research data, Panorama SEL survey results, observation data, Five Essential Survey results, and results from success team fishbone dialogues. Through a collaborative process, two performance challenges, referred to as PPCs, were identified as follows. Priority, priority performance challenge one, school-wide inconsistency with instructional and procedural non-negotiables. Priority performance challenge number two, low-level implementation of PBIS processes and reinforcements. Our plan to act on the data is as follows. During the twenty twenty-two D eleven district symposium, the improvement planning team chose major improvement strategy number one, collaborating and planning for learning, which supports D eleven best-first instruction initiatives. When our school learns and implements best-first instruction, collaboration, collaborating and planning for learning will clearly be defined and communicate, excuse me, learning will clearly define and communicate expectations for quantity and quality. Then student grade point averages, standardized assessments, performance on both district and state assessments, on-track for graduation rates, attendance, and graduation rates will improve. Consistent school-wide implementation of professional learning communities, referred to as PLC, that are guided by research-supported planning for learning practices will result in improved professional practice specific to measure, measuring students' knowledge of academic standards as well as student demonstration of adequate yearly progress toward mastery of content. Staff fidelity to school-wide non-negotiables will be evident resulting in consistent practices that contribute to our culture and climate of high achievement, expectations, accountability, and integrity. This work is supported by John Hattie's research specific to collective, collective teacher efficacy. We've heard that from a previous presentation. And has an effect size of one point five seven, which is the highest on the effect size range. Collective teacher efficacy is defined as staff's shared belief that through their collective action, they can positively influence student outcomes, including those who are disengaged or disadvantaged. Simply put, in schools with strong collective teacher efficacy, students learn more and their academic achievement increases. Action steps. Staff members at Mitchell High School have committed to actively participate in professional learning communities to review, analyze, examine, apply, and reflect upon data to improve professional practice and achieve student-centered growth. Our action steps include the adoption and implementation of universal PLC practices and protocols, providing professional development that supports implementation of practices, protocols, non-negotiables are going to be implemented, and implementation of universal accountability practices for progress monitoring, facilitation of collaborative dialogue, and to take action for course correction or to maintain the gains. Staff members are expected to use working norm systems, structures, and tools to facilitate effective and productive PLC. Intradepartmental and interdepartmental teams will meet during a common plan period for norm-setting, unit, and lesson planning, utilizing universal backwards design. Lesson learning targets and success criteria development will be stressed. Data analysis using adopted, adopted protocols, and progress monitoring for intentional vertical and horizontal alignment. PLC teams will upload common rubrics, universal lesson and unit planning templates, formative assessment, summative assessment, evidence of universal and equitable grading practices, and other data using school-wide adopted documentation and data housing procedures and systems. Major improvement strategy number two focuses on culture and climate, specifically success teams. This addresses the lack of positive behavioral interventions and support implementation. Improving the implementation of PBIS processes and reinforcements will improve teacher-student trust, which is housed within that supportive environment area of the Five Essentials. If PBIS processes are implemented and adhered to with fidelity, then student-teacher trust will improve and students will encounter similar expectations for behavior and engagement in every classroom. School-wide consistency specific to safety, security, and structure will be evident across the school. This will improve students' perception of teacher credibility and students' sense of belonging. Action steps for this MIS number two. In order to improve culture and climate, we will consistently implement success teams in collabora, in collaboration with our University of Chicago Network for College Success Partners. We will provide Kagan Cooperative Learning Structures and, and that, that professional development that supports team and class building among students and staff within the instructional environment. Provide students, or excuse me, provide professional development specific to relationship building, restorative practice, and restorative conversations. Develop and implement a hallway supervision and interaction audit. And implement universal accountability practice to monitor progress, facilitate collaborative dialogue, and to take action to course correct and/or maintain the gains. Our plan to deliver results. We will monitor the implementation of MIS one and MIS two by collecting and analyzing data to monitor consistence, consistency, quantity, and quality of implementation through our observation, coaching, and feedback cycles. We will use data to inform professional development planning and talent development. For example, coaching conversations in school-wide and differentiated professional development opportunities. Key data points include informal and formal observation tool, student on-track rates, benchmark assessments, common formative assessments, attendance, behavior, and course performance data, perception data, instructional leadership, learning walk data. At the central support level, we have already received and will continue to seek support, thank you, support, feedback, and guidance from central administration offices. We currently in collaboration with the Office of, excuse me, we are currently in collaboration with the Office of Educator Effectiveness, Education Insights, Curriculum and Instruction, Student Support and Engagement, Central Enrollment, Human Resources, Grants Procurement, and Career and Technical Education. And that's just to name a few. And with that last slide you can see, it's gonna take all of us, so together we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Bankus.
I wanna say how much this school has changed from a year ago. A year ago, I was at your open house and I found, I found that I didn't, I didn't feel the excitement for a new school year. I interacted with a couple of teachers and I didn't feel that if I were a parent that I would put my students into that school. Fast forward a year, oh my gosh, your open house was wonderful. I saw parents being purposeful. I saw teachers who wanted to be there and were excited about being there. I listened to, in the classroom, parents asking a question, which we tried to ask parents not to ask specific questions about their child when they're in a group of people, but they always do. And the teacher really, really did a wonderful job of being compassionate and being knowledgeable about that particular student, even though she was trying to meet the range of classes she was teaching that day. She had the textbooks out so parents could go ahead and look at them. Your talk in the auditorium was so positive and so confidence-building that when I looked around the room and saw parents kind of intent, they were just listening to every word that you said, and they, you really had them in the palm of your hand. So I'm really excited to see this year unfold and to see the, the great progress that you're making. And I again attended your nine eleven and it was, it was wonderful. You already answered one of my questions in the earlier slide. It talked about a drop in student teacher trust and teacher-parent trust. And you've already addressed that with your PBIS. And how it is, and again, based on what I saw at open house, that sometimes people get the idea that high school is trying to train these young people to be adults, and they're not adults yet.
That's right.
And so I see in this PBIS that you're putting together with the consistency and the fidelity of reaching out and making sure kids at this age understand consequences, but at the same time, they're not debilitating consequences so that they can move on, learn from it, and move on. I do have a couple more questions about transient families. What is your transient rate? I guess there's another word for it, but I can't remember it.
I do not know the transient rate. What I do know is that it's, it's pretty significant.
I, I would have thought, assumed so.
Yeah. Interestingly enough, we started, I think, when Mr. Gall came to the high school principals meeting. I think it was a weaker, the, the most recent, and, and Mr. Gall was asking, you know, what are your, what are your enrollment numbers? At that point, we were eight thirty approximately. We've grown by about thirty-five students.
Oh, nice.
And he made a great point earlier in terms of the, maybe the focus in terms of our enrollment. We did dip, we ended off last school year at, at nine fifty. Right now, we're right about eight, eight fifty. And so we've gained, like I said, when I gave him that report at the principals meeting, it was right about eight thirty. So we've, we've made a gain by about, like I said, thirty, thirty-five students approximately. But what we see with that transient population is we see a start to school later, right around Labor Day. You know? And I think a lot of that is our Hispanic Latinx population. And so that's something that we do need to address as we move forward. But we do see that. I don't have the exact numbers for you, though.
Not that, I, I specifically asked because most of our schools are located in resident, in housing areas, and you have a lot of apartments there.
That's right.
And sometimes when you have apartments, you have folks who are moving in and moving out. And that's gotta be something that impacts your school. And I don't know, it's outside of my area of expertise on how much of a relationship the apartment owners have with the school or the school with the apartment. I have no clue. It's a question, but I don't have any answers and I don't really have anything more than that.
The, the general numbers right now are indicating that the southeast is actually seeing population growth. And we're also seeing the least amount of choice exercised in Sherri's southeastern quadrant. Now, that can be indicative of a lot of things. But what we felt during enrollment was very long lines of non-English-speaking parents trying to enroll onsite. So we had to deploy our Spanish-speaking enrollment forces to the sites in the southeast, a lesson learned from centralized enrollment. But there is always a small inequity in choice, which is, choice is something that you can exercise if you know how to access and facilitate choice. And so what we believe is happening in the southeast is because of the lower entry to housing in the southeast sector of the city that we are attracting more migrant, immigrant, or non-English-speaking families who are showing up later and then not understanding that, and again, I don't want them to leave Mitchell, but that they can choose to drive two and a half miles up to Dougherty if they can choice in a Dougherty. So families that come in late and come in with the least amount of understanding of choice are more likely to say, that's the high school that's your boundary to, that's the high school you're going to. I've tried to engage, I, I shouldn't say try, I have engaged with many parents went onsite at Mitchell High School. And nine out of the ten that I have engaged with have not spoken fluent English and the students have had to translate my welcome-to-Mitchell, we're glad you're here, conversation with their parents.
And are you, you finding once they come to the school that they stay for the whole high school experience?
I wouldn't know that right now because it's only year two for me, as you well know.
That's true.
As you well know, but, but.
Well, we'll look at it.
Yes, I, I think, I think that's to be determined. What I will say is you brought up a great point in terms of the apartments across the street there. And it's interesting you said that and very coincidental because that thought was in my mind all last year. And as we continue to stabilize and engrain our values and our culture and develop the consistency needed to see the residual student, if you will, the, the, the family that will bring their, their student in elementary, right? It's gonna be important to make that connection across the street and partner with the owners or the owner of that, of that facility or that building, so. But that was on my mind, you know, last year, and, and we're, we're just now getting traction. As, as you mentioned, you know, you used the example of the open house. So as we build traction, we're gonna just continue to leak out into the community, make those connections and ask for support and partnership.
Have you thought much about bringing your alumni back?
Absolutely.
I seem to be meeting just Mitchell alumni. There's gotta be other people who've graduated from other schools. But yeah, they're, you know.
They're coming back, so we have two right here, Shay, and I don't know about the young lady next to you, but Shay and Mike. You know, SAC department chair, Mike comes to our SAC meetings. And so people are starting to come back and see the, or gain interest and actually invest energy and time. So it's good to see that. But absolutely, we need to continue to grow that.
I, I just have two more, I'm sorry. There was something in there about hallway supervision. Can you talk about that a little bit?
The audits.
Hallway supervision.
Yeah, and, and it was hallway supervision and interaction audits.
Yep.
So that was intentional language because when we're in hallway supervision, it should not be a negative or punitive like you were mentioning. PBIS, yes, we're teaching consequences, we're talking about the rewards and consequences for positive, and a lot, a lot of times, I think, people think about the word consequence and think negative all the time. Consequence can be positive. And so when we're talking about hallway supervision, one, it's an opportunity for teachers to be in the hall, not only for security and safety, but to, to say, hey, how was the game? not only for security and safety, but to, to say, hey, how was the game last night? They might not be going to my class, but if they're passing me, I can say, how was the game? How was the performance? How were your grades? You know, and, uh, so those hallway audits, we wanna get some data, who, who's out in the hallway? Monitor the teachers, cuz the expectation that you're in the hallways, you know, so who's in the hallways?
How do you track that data?
Exactly, it, it's a data point, that's exactly right. So that's, that was the point of that point, that talking point.
Is it manual, is it a, an app?
It's administrators in the hallway in hall, in, in, in passing periods modeling what the expectation is and being partners with the teacher so they're not doing it on their own. And it's not a boss saying, do this, but I'm not willing to do it myself. So it's manual.
The last thing I wanna talk about is, uh, your student council, thank you for having them out there. And I don't know how to promote the student council a little beyond what you're already doing, but I would like to see that blossom, I think there's a real potential there.
Thank you.
Thank you, and those are my questions, thank you.
May I share a very quick story about hallway supervision at Mitchell and just something that I've observed? Um, on one of my first visits to Mitchell, I, I was walking the halls with Ray Cockrell, one of the assistant principals. And I finally looked at her, I said, Ray, isn't today a student day? She said, well, yeah, of course it is. I said, then where are all your students? And she said, well, it's class time, they're in class. There was not a single student in the hallway. And I don't think that can be said of many of our secondary schools, but it comes back to that idea that when kids aren't in class, they're not learning, or at least they're not learning what we want them to learn. And so Mitchell has made a significant impact in that arena.
And I know it's late, I get excited, so don't put me last next time, no. No. Director Odd, I just wanted to speak to your point, heard your message loud and clear. As you were making that point, I went to our website, I gotta push back a little bit. But, but with that being said, we can always do better. But going back to then to your, your point, Secretary Bankes, is, um, we need to promote those other clubs and organizations at a higher level. Once again, I'm gonna say we're gaining traction. The snowball, the avalanche is coming, so.
You know, we talk about systems and structures and I've spent a lot of time at Mitchell, uh, particularly as we got ready for school start. And so again, hats off to Mike O'Brien coming from central office and becoming the, uh, lead custodian for, for Mitchell High School. If you go there, you can brush your teeth in the shine on the floor, they've done, they've done an excellent job there. But I also just wanna, and because one of the names came up, and, and I don't often reach down to that level, uh, from the dais, but I wanna acknowledge, uh, Ray and Amanda. When I looked at the systems and structures that were in place on the day before school started in this, is your paperwork ready? Do you have your laptop ready? It was ninth grade, tenth grade, eleventh grade, uh, twelfth grade tables, A through M, N through Z. Teachers there handing things out, these two assistant principals, and I know George, you have a lot to do with it, but if you wanna see what it looks like to see people run around and be in eight places at one place, those two are everywhere and anywhere, and the kids know it. And I think to this comment of, um, how we handle passing time, when you go to Mitchell, you feel as if the adults are present in the building. And when adults are present in the building, kids will be responsive. And so much of the messaging that we've had this year about trust is having adults know that they create the identity of the building of which kids will help inform, but they become a part of. When adults are on their heels, then kids will start to fill in that space. The kids at Mitchell are not any different than the kids in any of other, other, our, our other secondary schools. We just have to believe that Mitchell can get there, and I hope that you're starting to see this. I'd love, George, your opinion on what's happening and why you're seeing a bigger bubble in ninth grade than you expected? And what are your plans on how to, um, capitalize on that?
Great question, you made me think about that actually before that question came up right now. But if you look, um, in terms of enrollment, our two biggest grade levels in terms of enrollment size is ninth and tenth. I looked at the numbers real time while I was sitting in the back of the room. Sophomores actually are beating ninth graders right now, but enrollment did increase, um, like I said, over the last couple of weeks, days. Why is it, why are those the two strongest grade levels? Because it's a, it's our, it's a year down, it's always, it's already a year of consistency and familiarity with us as an admin team. And we actually did, we did have some turnover in staff, but we brought a lot of, we, we, we brought a lot of good staff back. And, um, and they're doing hard work, you know, just like Ken said, the teachers deserve, deserve the credit and the support staff deserve the credit. You know, leaders just kinda guide and, and, and the people have to take the initiative and run with it. But, um, it's because they're familiar, they know the expectations now. And I'm gonna, I'll go a step further. I think some of the upperclassmen that decided to maybe, um, part ways with us, major might not be the best fit for them right now because we have structure, we have security. We have, we have things in place that are limiting some of the behaviors and interests that possibly may have been going on in the past. I wasn't there. But we see a decrease in eleventh and twelfth grade, we see ninth and tenth growing. And that's because, um, I'm a firm believer in security, structure, and discipline is a form of love and childrens can feel that because we, we serve, when we say PBIS is not lip service. You know, we believe in it and we act on it, so that's my answer.
How many students do you have approximately in ninth and tenth grade?
My computer shut down, I wanted to give you live data, decided to reboot somehow. We're right at eight fifty.
But i- in ninth grade?
Oh, ninth grade, uh, two, approximately two thirty-one, maybe a little less than that.
Okay, and tenth grade, you said is a little more than that?
Very, very comparable. So I might be off by, you know, ten, but it's very comparable.
Okay, so between those two grades, you have almost five hundred kids?
Absolutely.
And then you, the tenth, I mean, uh, the juniors and seniors, only about three hundred and?
Attrition starts to happen, I believe seniors are right at one sixty-seven and juniors are a bit bigger than that.
Director Jorgensen.
Perfect, so a couple of questions, I know, I see Ms. Nash in the back there. With the innovation plan, I know that we had Ms. Nash's team out there and helping with your instructional rounds and, and giving your teachers a little more focused feedback and a little bit more, uh, time in the classroom to, to observe an instruction and, and give them some coaching. So how has that helped? And then I piggyback on that because it was part of the innovation plan, how has the innovation plan specifically helped you with success so far as well? Since we approved that last year?
Exactly, and great question, uh, Vice President Jorgensen. So to the first part, Tanya Nash and her team have been instrumental in the, the productivity and the progress that we've made. Right now, with the help of Tanya Nash, Danielle Potter, and I gotta give a, a shout out to, uh, Sean Norman over at Odyssey. He helped us develop our, our informal observation tool. And as of today, thirty-five informal observations have already been conducted and completed. And, um, Tanya's probably seen the uploads going into Randa already. Short cycle feedback on five non-negotiable practices that are high leverage, data, um, research supported. So it's happening.
Awesome.
You know, it's, it's like anything, the more, the, the more feedback and the more expeditious the feedback is, the better you're gonna become, if the coach is good. And so we're, we're working with Tanya to become better coaches.
And if the players are coachable.
Abs- exactly, there you go.
Two sides to that coin.
There you go, now, second part to the question, innovation plan. Much of what we had in place last year was approved by you, the board, and then the state. It was already in place, it wa- just continue to run with it. There are things like the school leadership team that we need to activate and we're working to activate. There are, um, initiatives around staff salary, uh, incentive, uh, pay that we have in the waivers. We would love to get those activated with the support of various offices and, and the board. You know, we're, uh, Miss Call back, we are working on that and working out different ways to entertain that idea and activate that aspect of the innovation plan. Scheduling, uh, we have ideas around scheduling to maybe attract, retain, and develop teachers. Yeah, I hope that answers some, that's kinda just some of that, that I'm spitballing off the top of my head that I could think about. Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
I, I wanna reframe the question, do you feel restricted at all in your ability to implement buckets within the innovation school language?
Yes.
Can you share with the board what you feel restricted on?
So me and, Sherry and I, uh, have presented some plans at various levels about the incentive-based pay, um, additional pay for staff. Once again, if, we're, we, you're seeing progress with a staff that is not even fully staffed. You're looking at a principal who keeps a, I'm gonna say, very optimistic attitude and gets smacked with a whole bunch of punches on a day-to-day basis. But that's the, that's the job of a leader, so, but Sherry and I have proposed a couple things. She knows better than me where maybe the bottlenecks are at and such, but we keep going back. But yes, I, I do feel restricted on, that's the one example I come, because if I, I feel like if we can offer teachers more pay to come to Mitchell, and it doesn't necessarily have to be long-term, matter of fact, an innovation plan doesn't have to be long-term. I don't know if it's intended to be long-term. Really, best practice should be best practice and just ingrained in the, in the culture and embedded in the culture. So once that takes root, maybe you don't, maybe we go back to, you know, uh, normal or standardized pay. But in the meantime, to get a fully-staffed Mitchell High School, an incentive pay, um, some bonus pay, it's written in the innovation plan on all three levels.
One of the first opportunities that we looked at for funding some of the innovative ways to pay, uh, both incoming staff to Mitchell and current staff was through the fund balance committee. Those ideas did not score well with fund balance, but we have other opportunities. We'll look at ESER, we may come to you with a request for general fund monies. Being told no in one place cannot stop turnaround leadership, um, because if it does, we will never turn a school around. So we will keep coming back with different ways to fund this and different opportunities, uh, to put these ideas on the table and hopefully find ways to not only bring staff into Mitchell, but to retain the great ones once we're there. George does a phenomenal job with keeping people at Mitchell and there are things that we can do to support that as well. Sure.
Director Odd.
Thank you, a couple of things, um, to your point about the website, yes, there's excellent information about, well, some information anyway about performing arts, so that would be another great reason to go there. And I know that, um, you, your staff can do a great play, at least, I haven't been to some of the concerts yet. But that could change this year. But something like this, the, this is again true of all the schools, I think, school accountability committee. You, you lean on that pretty heavily in the UIP and yet I don't see, um, where the meetings are. I don't see any information about the SAC, so for your folks who are here. And that's true in general, I think, for some, a lot of our folks. When I look at the calendar, that's, you can scroll through at the bottom, it's all about the district calendar. It's not about the school calendar. I can't find out when your open house was on your calendar. And at least, I, I didn't go all the way back, but that's something I would be looking for too. If I wanna attend a SAC meeting, a PTA meeting, where's that information? So, um, I did hear a concern about, oh, let me just check real quick. SAC, uh, yes, the website, and tardy stings, can you, you, it sounds like it's great that they're, that's, that's a phrase I heard from a, a parent. It's great that people are in their classrooms, et cetera, but it sounds like that is almost punitive. Can you assess, can you just give me some more information on that? Is it punitive, is it not? To Gal, the last Galileo comment was, you celebrate the kids that are there. And that you all are so passionate about your kids and your schools and I appreciate that. And absolutely, we wanna celebrate those kids that are there. So if they're running tardy, what happens?
Yeah, if they're, a tardy sting, um, is a reminder that punctuality and attendance is important. And, um, they get a tardy sting and we track that through Power School. And it's, it's a tiered, it's a tiered approach to that. So just because they receive a tardy sting doesn't mean they go to lunch detention, they don't go to ISD, they don't get suspended. It's a reminder that, yes, you got a little sting, you got a little pinch and, um, but if it becomes habitual, then it's tiered and, um, discipline is, um, assigned accordingly to the tiered process.
Okay, I might follow up in an email with, with a question, just about like numbers, how many? But that's not, that's really something we have to keep on here.
Absolutely. I will say, Director Odd, that tardy stings came up at the state board hearing last spring and they were interested in that too. So it made state news.
Thank you.
Director Nelson.
Uh, you already touched on this a little bit, that a lot of what is listed has been in place over the past year. And I recognize the, when I visited the school last spring and I got the tour with Ms. Cockrell, that we went in the hallway and they were doing the monitoring and all of that. So I was just curious, if there are a lot of things, you don't have to name them all, but are, is there anything in particular that is new this school year that you are implementing?
Yes, so to close achievement and, uh, achievement and growth gaps, we have implemented Ed Ready at a, at a higher level. If you are not familiar with Ed Ready, it is, it's an intervention and support program. Right now, we're, you can use it for either math or English. Right now, our English department, or excuse me, our math department has really adopted it and taken the bull by the horns. And students can complete, um, a course that is differentiated and assigned to that specific student based upon where they're at and where they need to be grade level. Work on courses throughout the semester in tandem with the regular curriculum. Fill in that achievement and that learning gap to get back on, on track. And we have offered a, um, a credit attachment to that. So a student that completes all their courses proficiently, one, they're going, the big, the big carrot is they're, the knowledge, the understanding, the comprehension, and the, um, ability to demonstrate mastery is going to improve. So that's the big carrot. The smaller carrot is they get a credit for doing that while they're engaged in their regular coursework. So that's an innovation and that, that was a, um, a program, if you will, that we were able to seek out autonomously and make a decision about using budget to, um, purchase that.
So it's online?
It is an online curriculum, or yeah, curriculum developed for the individual student to close those gaps. And then another example I will use in terms of our structures is we purchased e-Hall Pass. And, uh, that is another big reason, um, that our hallways are as they are and that we are maximizing instruction from bell to bell. Uh, the e-Hall Pass system helps us manage that culture and climate and keep those high expectations of, uh, um, learning and getting kids into the classroom. So those are two examples.
Awesome, thank you, that was my only question.
Great question.
Okay, thank you, appreciate, uh, all the hard work that you're doing. I know that it's a really heavy lift at Mitchell. It seems like you were behind the eight ball with all the changes that were happening and now you have staffing shortages out there and I'm not sure how you are coping with the sixteen-plus teachers that you are missing out there. So, uh, thanks for what you are doing. My one concern is that even though your incoming ninth grade class beats projection, it's still, uh, the overall enrollment in the school is slipping from what it was last year. So then we would have to effectively talk about at some point in time, what is the future pathway for Mitchell? You know, and, uh, I appreciate your request, what you're talking about is, you know, teachers need, um, additional bonus or, uh, pay to attract teachers out there. But with that comes accountability too, that when you have eight or nine percent of the students that are, uh, math, that's what your PSAT scores seem to be saying, uh, ready or, uh, passing, uh, level. We gotta have some accountability there. I mean, we've invested a lot of money at Mitchell, you've come over the years and asked us for, uh, support and structure. So there has to be some point in time where we see the story at Mitchell turning. I appreciate, uh, the two Mitchell alumni that are right here, that is even a good starting point. They are here at ten thirty at night and I think they are here to support you. And they believe in your leadership and that's why they are there, so. We need more people like that believing in Mitchell to, uh, get the, um, students back into Mitchell, so thank you.
I just wanna, um, interject, as the Fund Balance Task Force recommendations come to the board in working session next week, the goal for incentivizing talent at Mitchell, we want to ensure that it's not a dollar grab. We want there to be accountability, we wanna make sure that the best swimmer is in the deepest part of the pool. We want there to be accountability. We want to make sure that the best swimmer is in the deepest part of the pool. We believe theoretically in two axes of improvement. One is time, and the other is quality. So, if we can get more time and better instruction, uh, for our students at Mitchell, we know that we can continue the improvement that we believe we're starting to see. And of course, Mitchell, in all the turnaround schools, is suffering from the least amount of leading indicator, because it's, we're only on George's second year, but really Mitchell, I, I won't even call it part two, because I mean, Mitchell's been here so long. The newest version of Mitchell due to the scraping being just, you know, eighteen to twenty months ago. So, this is the shortest amount of fuse that we have lit right now. But as we consider how it is that we incentivize the strongest teachers in the district to take on the largest challenge, we want to make sure that there's accountability there, um, and that we use the innovation opportunities to our advantage and not create, um, you know, throwing good money after bad. So, the things that we will bring to you in that work session will hopefully be reflective of that. And I appreciate the bravery of both George and Sheri to say the things, um, on record today when, when asked for that candor. I appreciate that.
So, thank you. Appreciate it. Uh, this is just a question to one of your area superintendents, uh, Mr. Gall, uh, or maybe it's somebody else from, how many schools are in now priority improvement or turnaround? Because I'm expecting another nine or ten schools to come in front of the school board over the next several months.
You won't see them over the next several months. Uh, we do have more schools than this that are priority improvement or turnaround, but because there is the pause in the accountability clock moving forward, we're not required to bring those USIPS to the board for approval this year. If those schools stay where they are at priority improvement or t- or turnaround next year, we anticipate that then they would start the accountability clock, and we would be bringing you those USIPS. Our goal is not to do that.
Okay. That's great. So, these are the only four schools that the board has to approve for USIPS. The rest of them, we do, we don't have to see them in October, November, or December, something. I thought we had to see the rest of the schools. But, uh, just theoretically, uh, what is the number of schools that are priority improvement or turnaround? Have we got that information from CD, uh, CD or?
Yes. SPF's were released last week. Um, I know within my, uh, area, I have five schools that are either priority improvement or turnaround.
And total number, do you know? Okay.
I would need to lean on my other area suits for that.
Okay. Would we be able to get, uh, that SPF, that, uh, data that was released for all the schools as just, um, email to the board? That would be good. Yep. No, we can't, but.
Okay. We, right now, we have, um, on the list, again, starting with the clock, like Sheri was explaining, including the schools that were identified tonight, fifteen schools.
Okay.
Um, and with that, what I would say is, even though it's starting, because the data is, has inconsistencies, which is why the state is doing that, um, but we are providing, we were just talking about it as a group with area superintendents, uh, per our superintendent direction, um, additional supports. We talked about, um, prioritizing schools. Uh, they will also be part of that as well, in terms of our support.
But could we just get that?
Yeah, we'll get to the list.
Thank you.
I thought I had a hard copy in my office, but they cleaned my desk.
Yeah. Just send, send the bo- email to the board. Moving on, if, again, we've wrapped up the conversation here, these are the four schools. If you have any feedback after looking at the USIPS, please send it to, uh, Superintendent Gall, and then attach the area superintendent's or, uh, his, um, chief academic officer and the principals of those respective schools, uh, so they have your feedback before it comes in a couple of weeks as act- action item. Future urgent items. Request for new urgent items from board. Director Nelson.
I would like to propose a conversation on the hiring, uh, information that we receive. Um, I just noticed that sometimes there are new positions listed throughout, and so it would be nice to have a summary at the end, maybe, of how many are new positions. And then, um, if, for example, if it's a TOSA, maybe just some information on how long that contract is for, that they're temporary teacher on. Special assignment, so is it, you know, how long of a?
Do you mean on the consent agenda that we put forward for the new positions?
Yeah, and so I don't know, I, maybe if the board wants to actually talk about what it looks like, and if they agree with me that they want that information at a future date, or if you say, yeah, it'd be nice to have just like at the very bottom of that document saying, there were this many new positions now.
Yeah, I think we can add an executive summary to the top of new difference, you know, something like that. So, I'll, I'll get a draft to you, and then we'll talk offline, and then we'll present it at the next board meeting.
And then, uh, maybe also just kind of a summary now of where we're at today on new positions. Cause going forward, you'll have that, but now, like this list of two, over two hundred, you know, if you're to date where we're at.
Absolutely.
What the new positions, well, that'll be a great place to start. Um, secondly, I wondered if, I'm just not, I know we talk a lot about best-first instruction, but I would like to get some more information on what are we doing to support the students that were in twenty nineteen in third grade, n- n- doing so poorly, and now they're in sixth grade? How are we supporting them? They're already so behind, and is it that we are screening them when they come into middle school and see that they're actually at a third-grade reading level still? And then so that automatically puts them into an elective to get them additional support? Or just how are we handling, um, maybe we're already doing things, but is it we could be brainstorming other ideas of how to support the students that are behind, and not just at the elementary level?
Yeah, so we'll take that in a work session. If, uh, let's see, we have a work session next week, so I want to go, uh, well, that'll be full, so we'll go to.
You can figure out when, but I would love to get more.
Uh, Tamara, bring that forward.
Yeah.
Um, and this idea of scaffolding kids to catch up while they're behind, we can do that work, that's the work of what we're doing. But we have to explain it differently, so folks don't think that if you're behind, you're never catching up.
Right.
So, we'll, Tamara, uh, we'll, we'll bring that to you.
Let me just, uh, make sure that the board is interested, the majority of the board is interested in it. The request that, um, Lauren, Director Nelson made, are we good with it? We have four thumbs up? Okay. Okay. Do I see four thumbs up? That's what I want to know. I only see three. Okay. So, at this time, if we can just get that as an email, um.
Yeah, that's fine.
Oh, we do?
Email's fine.
Okay.
I mean, if, if there are already things in place of, here's how we're, if that's what you guys want. I'm, I'm good with either, either in work session or email, however you all want to do it, whatever's easier. You figure it out.
We'll do, uh, an email with a flipped video that explains the email, because it's not the easiest concept to just read.
Yeah.
Um, and so I want to make sure that we're getting Tamara's voice into the space.
Sounds good. If that's.
So, you can't separate the two, otherwise you continue to have the problem that we've had over time, even pre-COVID, pre, like with larger gaps, right, with remediation.
Yeah.
So, that's the risk in, in doing it in such a short format.
Okay. And if you determine that it would actually be better in a work session, then make that call. I mean, what, however is easier for you to give us the information?
That was it for mine. Thank you.
Director Jorgensen.
Yeah, a couple, uh, things. The first would be kind of piggybacking on our graduate profile discussion with the, uh, financial literacy piece. When I was at Coronado's open house, I spoke with Rebecca, one of the counselors there, and I said, hey, how, how things going this year? And she just mentioned, uh, good, can we talk about early graduation? And I was like, well, what do you have? And she says, I've got one page in our policy that talks about early graduation, and from nineteen ninety-five, and no discussion, no policy, no, no, nothing in it. And I thought, well, we're already having a discussion on graduate profile. Perhaps we could add in not only early graduation and what that would look like. I would assume it would tie into concurrent enrollment some way of having early graduation, meaning we'll take college credits, but having something more purposeful in place if we need to. And then, uh, Rhonda Heschel brought up a good point of the soft skills. Is that something that we have in our graduate profile so that people, just people, so that our kids that are graduating are maybe career-ready right away with a certain level of soft skills? So, trying to maybe tack it on to the same work session of graduate profile talk, early graduation, soft skills, financial literacy, if that's not too loaded or not, but if we're opening that box of graduate profile, what else do we want to do to make it more efficient and offer more options for our graduates? So, that's my ask.
Okay. So, you had, Director Jorgensen, you, there was already a request, I think, at the previous, uh, meeting for what you were talking about.
Right, financial literacy, graduate profile.
Okay.
But to, to our constituent requests that are building, with kids that are high achievers, early graduation's an option, what do we have for them other than one page that literally says?
Okay.
Early graduation may be permitted when a student has completed the course requirements for graduation.
Sure.
May nineteen ninety-five.
Okay.
Is there anything else we need to have to help them?
Okay.
So.
So, if they've completed them, I mean, but it, it would be good to have an understanding, like directly connected to your question of, um, what are the, uh, requirements connected to, um, competency, which is in direct alignment to our focus as a district, um, with overall mathematics instruction, K-12 as well. So, that, and financial literacy. So, that's where I would focus it, um, and, and we could get it early.
Cool. It's just part of that discussion, I suppose.
Okay. If, if I, what Director Jorgensen is asking for is that, uh, do I have four thumbs up? Okay. Okay. So, that can tie into the same conversation that we are having. Okay.
I got one more then.
Okay, what's the next one?
So, the, the next one, I mean, we, we heard about it tonight. I've been kind of trying to track it and, and get some ducks in a row as far as my own edification of, of learning about it. Um, but it is that the ballot issue for recreational marijuana, I was already gonna bring it up before people even spoke. Uh, just looking at that, I know we're looking at the Healthy Foods Initiative already in a work session as far as about, uh, I, uh, item, potentially, sorry, I'm tired. Potentially having that discussion as another ballot item to say, hey, what are the pros and cons? We can inform our stakeholders, our constituents, you know, us as a district on, you know, what this might lead to, THC impacts, you know, the magic mushrooms and pro- and proposition one-twenty-two. I mean, just the psychedelic substances and things that are not good for our kids to be dabbling in or being exposed to.
So, what's the request? Do you want?
The request would be to have potentially what, um, Councilman Donaldson mentioned of having a resolution if we have enough information to make that resolution from a work session.
Okay. Is there any information that you want from the superintendent to help you make that decision? Is, like, the marijuana being a problem, do we, you know, uh, request him for some data on drugs in our schools? And then that helps you, or is this just an internal board discussion that you want to have?
I think it'd just be a dis- a discussion, you know, we could have people bring their own information.
Okay.
Um, you know, pros and cons of the initiative. I know we talked about, you know, as a teacher, I remember talking about where all that money go, and, you know, to the best grant. Well, the marijuana tax is a small portion of that best grant. It's mainly lottery dollars, and it's a competitive grant where you have to apply for it to get this money. And so, you know.
So, you want to see if the board is interested in having a resolution?
For the safety of our students and drug use, yes.
So, this is just an internal board discussion that you want to have as opposed to tasking the superintendent with getting any information to the board?
I agree. Yes, that, and if we all go, yeah, let's have a resolution and not have recreational drugs, then we just, I could draft a resolution and not even have a work session.
Okay. Is there, uh, the request that, uh, Director Jorgensen made, uh, and we are already going to talk about the Healthy Foods Initiative, and the earliest that I can probably put it would be the October fifth work session, so we can bring that Healthy Foods Initiative, which we already wanted to talk about at the time, and that could be more with, uh, district input onto it. Is this a discussion that the board is interested in having? Okay. I have three thumbs up. Okay, four. Okay. So, there is four, so we will talk about it at the time if there is interest in having it. Would you be able to bring some type of resolution that, uh, of basis for a resolution that the board can look at at that point in time, along with maybe some information on? Both those. Okay. Thank you.
And we, let's just double them up. At the same time, I want to make sure that if the district is talking about ballot initiatives, that we're giving equal amounts of time to them with this, them being on the same election day. So, if people are voting on how they feel about extending free lunch opportunities, as well as how they feel about the sale of recreational marijuana, that the people who come to the podium for or against either one, then don't come back to us and say, well, you only gave yourselves a week to decide that one, and you gave yourselves a month to decide the other one.
Both are going to probably right now, October fifth, if that's okay with you.
Yeah, that, that's okay with me, but I just, and then, then let's just say then, that's it for no November vote. Like, if there's anything else that we think that's on that ballot, we should air it right now, cause we're only want to do this once where if we think the board wants to have a position, or the district wants to have a position on any ballot.
There, I don't see any further requests, so I'm going to, you know, assume that that's the only two topics that you guys want to talk about. Okay. With that, uh, calendar review, um, Wednesday, September twenty-first, the topic is going to be, uh, all fund balance, okay? The bond payoff options, we are also going to talk about that. And we also have, um, the topic where, uh, the DAC Chair, Velvet Stepanek, reached out to ask about community-school partnership collaborative, if I got that right. Uh, they were, uh, involved in some of those community meetings, um, uh, last, uh, spring. Uh, she wants to provide an update to the board, and she wants board feedback on the direction that we want to see that collaborative go in this upcoming year. So, that's also going to be on the September twenty-first work session. September twenty-eighth is a regular board meeting. October fifth, we will have a work session, and tentatively, the two topics, uh, right now is going to be the ballot initiatives that are there. And then I will work with Superintendent Gall to see if there is anything else we need to. And we are almost at eleven o'clock, uh, so may I have a motion to adjourn? Wow, that's like, uh, second and triple, the third and fourth. Melissa, roll call, please.
Dr. Bankus?
Hi.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Reverend Loma?
By the way, Reverend Loma had to leave, uh, so he was excused.
Dr. Mel Packham?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Naught?
Aye.
Aye, Savit. We are officially adjourned at ten fifty-nine PM.